Okay, we are about to open the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Wednesday, June 26th. And I'm going to begin with a couple of announcements, assuming I can find my piece of paper. Okay.
I want to say congratulations to our new Senator, Ed Markey.
Yes.
Let's hope he's a strong proponent of community development block grant money.
Well, apropos of that, it would be appropriate for us to say that the town of Brookline generated more voters than the state average. There were about 33 percent of voters who came out. And compared to 27 across the state, was still a low turnout, but we did do better. And it was important to know that the election day happened on a day of heat emergency. And there were some very important activities that many of the town's employees engaged in, in order to make the polling places healthy, I guess I would say, and safe, given the heat emergency. So perhaps Town Administrator would tell us a little bit about what happened? I understand that there were fans and cooling and lots of other things that took place in a very short time.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chairman. So obviously, the town, there was a heat wave, and the town did, early on Monday, declare a heat alert, which is a more formal process to support people who are vulnerable during this heat wave. And so, when the election was being planned for this week, the Town Clerk, Pat Ward, and his assistant Linda Goldberg, very concerned, probably not so much for the voters, who, this was a one-issue ballot, so it was going to be relatively quickly, quick process, and there was a relatively low turnout, but we were very concerned about the health of our poll workers, who work very long hours, and about half of our poll locations are not air-conditioned. And so that was the main concern. And so, Town Clerk approached the Health Director and I, and we put into place some immediate provisions to try to cool those spaces down, or create airflow, or other measures to help those poll workers. And so I wanted to make a few comments and thank yous on behalf of the Town Clerk and others. So, emergency preparedness, as they usually do, they're very well-prepared to deal with these kind of emergencies, and Mike Raskin in particular was very supportive. The Building Department, Dan Bennett, Charles Simmons, and Mark Sacco were very, very helpful, and pulled together as many fans, and acquired fans, on an emergency basis, to create more airflow in those large spaces. We also created cool rooms in a particular building, so for example, if it was in the one of the school buildings, where the large gymnasium space was not air-conditioned, we did create some rooms in the facility that could be used for breaks, and other ways to accommodate the poll workers, and so created those. And the police, school custodians, Ed Clancy and Jay Pagorulo, very helpful. The police, who were assigned at those polling locations, were extremely helpful. And also Frank Zika came through, just our Retirement Administrator had heard about the issue and pulled in. And so it's very-
Actually, he provided water.
He did.
Very important, for hydration.
He took care of the water. So, like a lot of things with the town, when there's a crisis, people come together, and I just want to say thanks to all those groups, I'm very proud of them, and I know that the Town Clerk and their poll workers were very appreciative of the efforts as well. Thank you.
Yeah, can I add?
Add-
I went to vote about noontime at Runkel, and it was not, the efforts were successful, because even though that space wasn't air-conditioned, it wasn't terribly uncomfortable. You know, a little warmish, but it wasn't bad.
Very good.
Any other additions from members of the board?
I'll just say a thank you to the poll workers, who were there from like six in the morning till-
About night, eight or nine, well, nine, yeah, I think nine o'clock at night, right.
A long day under arduous circumstances, so thank you.
And stayed cool throughout. This past week, on Monday, the B-Space Committee held a public hearing on options for providing additional classrooms for our increasing enrollment. We heard from many citizens and got some new ideas for the committee to investigate, and I'm just sort of saying this for the public, that originally, B-Space thought there would be a report at the end of June, it now looks like it might be delayed, and certainly final recommendations will not be ready until probably September. Selectman Goldstein and Waschinsky were part of the committee, and Selectman Daley and Banker were in the audience, so if anybody else wants to comment about the meeting, feel free to do so.
I just want to say, I thought it was an excellent meeting, a lot of important input. There was, we pleaded for new ideas, for-
And we did get some.
For new solutions, and I'm pleased to say there's at least one that I'm following up on right now, and I look forward to being able to report back on that.
Okay, any other comments?
Yeah, one thing that's clear to me is that there are no easy choices in solving the problem, and every possible solution has serious downsides, so it's going to be a tough, tough process, and I hope we can find a solution and come together.
Yes, I certainly think it's going to be challenging. I just want to remind everybody that tomorrow, there will be a farmer's market in Coolidge Corner, starting at 1:30. There will not be one a week from Thursday, which is the July 4th holiday, and on Tuesday next week, there will be no Selectmen's meeting. Any other comments, announcements from members?
A real quick one. Last Thursday night, there was a, the first presentation, first vetting of the new plan for the Red Cab site on Route 9. Selectman Banker was there too. I was able to stop by and see it. I just wanted to say that, you know, people should contact the Planning Office, get a look at it. I think you'll find that it's a, in general, a more desirable plan than we've seen in previous incarnations proposed for that site. And I look forward to that process getting started, too.
Okay, any other, okay, then I'm going to move on to public comment. Ms. Baker, you have three minutes to explain your proposal.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and my colleagues in service to the town of Brookline. I'm Joanna Baker, Precinct 13, Town Meeting Member, and I'm motivated to ask for your attention to this matter, because I was invited to serve on the Design Review Committee for Waldstein Park, better known as Dean Road Park. Our process concluded last June, we got fantastic comments from the community, and we had very bad fortune with weather. We had driving rain, we had bitter cold, and people needed to come to a public building to participate in this process. And so that involved on the freezing, freezing cold night, being down here in Room 103 at Town Hall, and another night getting over to All Saints Church, which people came anyway, because they loved the park so much. But, in the process of campaigning for a town meeting, I met a neighbor who is affiliated with MIT and said, you know, "There are communities that are allowing people to participate in these kind of public input conversations online." And I was like, "Oh, that's a really good idea." I raised it with Selectman Banker's wife, who talked to me about open meeting law, and I'm not an expert at open meeting law. I'm not an expert at changing the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, but I am a big advocate of civic engagement. And I took it upon myself to write to the-
To the Attorney General.
The Attorney General's Office, the Division for Open Meetings, and they have an Advisory Commission. And to my delight, when my letter came up on their agenda, another resident of Brookline had also written to them about the same topic. I think we're both inspired by the incredible outpouring of great ideas and passion and thoughtfulness of the participants in the B-Space conversation on Facebook. And while I respect what people have been contributing, I don't think it should be on Facebook. I think the town should create a forum, because Facebook is a barrier. There are barriers to coming to Town Hall. If you don't have money for childcare, and you have kids, you can't come. If you don't drive at night, I've found that I have neighbors asking me to give them a ride to things at Town Hall, because they're okay during the day, but their vision isn't good for driving at night, they don't like to take public transit, they're disenfranchised. There are many instances where actually coming to Town Hall, or another public building, is a barrier to participation, if that's the only way. And I know you can send emails and letters, but there's something to be said for the back and forth. And in B-Space, I know it's been burdensome for Alan Morse to be the only person who can respond to all the wonderful and sometimes inaccurate things being put on the B-Space Facebook page, and he's apparently had to respond to 150 individual emails. I don't know about you, but in the classroom, they say, "There's no bad question," because if you're thinking of that question, several other people are probably thinking the same question. If we had a public forum on the Internet that was properly noticed, and announced, it opens here and it closes there, and the members of the governing board, or the deciding body, were required to review it, that's me, you could cut off a bad suggestion, or rectify something incorrect, right there, if you're the member of the governing body who is in a position to respond, because as we understand it, open meeting law prevents any kind of deliberation. And I just want to conclude by saying, I think open meeting law was written at a time when we didn't have this wonderful resource, the Internet. Apparently, Tempe, Arizona, has forums online that you could look at, for an example. I was referred to them by Kevin Stokes of the IT Department of Brookline, who also suggested that I come and talk to you, and say that I'm very passionate about Brookline being a leader in trying, in a trial basis, some kind of Internet forum, for people to give their opinions, and by trying it, maybe with the override group, or the next stage of the B-Space discussion, which people will be very passionate about, we can learn a lot before we decide how to proceed. Thank you for the time and consideration.
Did you get a written response from the Attorney General's Office, or?
Oh, no, that takes months.
Right. We don't normally, and we're not really, part of our public comment policy is no dialogue, but what I will do, at least, is tell you that, in B-Space, we have committee members who are sometimes not present, and we had to negotiate a special sort of protocol for them to participate remotely by telephone. And I do understand that there are real concerns from the legal aspect of how a public meeting is conducted. It may be possible to create a public forum that is not a public meeting, which I don't have an answer for you right now, but I just do know that, under the regulations, under the guidelines for an open meeting, it's very difficult, and I even do somewhat understand why that would be the case. But anyway, it's certainly something for us to think about.
And if I may, those rules about remote participation are not what I'm suggesting at all.
No, I know, I'm just saying that was something we tried.
It's the asynchronous communication that really expands the possibilities.
Yeah.
I thank you all for your service and for your consideration.
Okay, is Ms. Allen here? Please come forward.
Hello, my name is Susan Allen, I'm from Precinct 13. First, I'd just like to welcome Neil Waschinsky to the board. I'm sure Brookline's going to benefit from your contributions.
Thank you.
I'm here today to refer to my concern about the increased camera surveillance that Chief O'Leary is recommending. I was against any camera surveillance, as many of you know, and I am very concerned that the proposal now, after the Boston Marathon bombing, seems to be increasing the impetus to extend hours of camera surveillance. At this juncture, I think we need to ask ourselves, is the rise in American surveillance driven by the goal to protect the public, or is it driven by the goal of interested parties to control information? Evidence shows a spy state is being erected all around us, driven by a public-private relationship, working in lockstep with public safety officials to record our behaviors, monitor our relationships, and predict every move we make. Data has been categorized by what we willing give up, i.e. on Facebook, and what's taken without our knowledge. Personalized profiles are then created on us and used to predict our moves. The public reacting to endless sensationalized terrorist attacks are primed and ready to surrender their basic rights. The question is, would more cameras really have helped officials catch the terrorists during the Boston Marathon? In high-profile cases, it's unlikely, given reportedly the footage from the camera which overlooked the Boston Marathon bombing, has been suppressed. Also, if many of you remember, when Princess Diana died, the camera footage was suppressed as well. There's a, which leads me to think that control of information, again, may be the goal in these high-profile situations. There's a lot that we're not being told about the Boston Marathon bombing. The federal government is in charge of the investigation. The same federal government that botched the Katrina rescue operation ignored intel which could have prevented 9/11, and who acknowledged, according to prior State Department official Patrick Kennedy, that the underwear bomber was allowed on the plane from Amsterdam to Detroit to enable the FBI to follow his movements in the U.S., the same excuse given as the shoe bomber. Patrick Kennedy, as Under Secretary for Management of the State Department, said Mutala's visa wasn't taken away because intelligence officials asked his agency not to deny a visa to the suspected terrorists, over concerns that denial would have foiled a larger investigation into Al Qaeda's threats in the United States. Now, the New York Times reports that many of these dramas are facilitated by the FBI, where some recruits have been paid up to $250,000 to plant bombs, for example, at two Riverside synagogues. Regarding such a recruit, Judge Colleen said during sentencing, "Only the government could have made a terrorist out of the target recruit, Mr. Chromite, and branded the attack as a fantasy terror operation." The FBI's claims that their bombs are fake cannot be trusted. Clearly, the bomb, the underwear bomber was wearing, went off. National Geographic reports that Ali Mohammed, indicted on charges related to 9/11, was an operative for the CIA and the FBI, and trained terrorists how to hijack airliners, bomb buildings, and assassinate rivals. But was this information widely publicized in mainstream media? It's unlikely, given news for public dissemination is censored by the BBG, which is the Broadcasting Board of Governors. It's an organization most of us have never heard of, but we fund this organization. So blissfully unaware, too busy, or apathetic to object, the public continues to act as if surveillance initiatives are here to protect us. However, what might be the real goal of surveillance? Consider that increased collection of personal data by public officials is gathered to provide actionable evidence for potential convictions in court. The prison industrial complex is very profitable to interested parties. Low wages equal higher profits. Increased warrantless collection of personal data likely to provide increased actionable data, leading to an increased incarceration rate of the American public. If you look to the right, take a look at how many Americans are-
Please conclude.
Of course. So, moving to the end, I'm saying, I think we need to take a look that, at, the investigations are being held by the federal government. We, our Police Department is receiving federal funding to increase surveillance in Brookline. I am asking that this board vote against increasing surveillance in Brookline, and I've asked public officials at the state level to investigate these issues, and I think that we need to stop accepting money from federal officials to compromise our civil liberties. And I thank you very much for your attention to this matter, and all the information that I cited. I've listed partial or full articles behind to substantiate this comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Okay, moving along on our agenda, the next item is the minutes from June 18th. There are corrections and additions to the minutes.
I had one correction, which I sent along.
I had a couple as well.
As do I.
Then I move that we approve the minutes of June 18th as amended. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Banker?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We have now, next, a series of contracts. I'm happy to go through them individually, or if people are comfortable, we can take them as a group. These are pretty straightforward. You have questions about them? You want to hold one for questions?
Well, I have one sort of general question on the spending of the million dollars on the Unified Arts Building. When I was listening to your-
Mr. Quigley.
Well, it's really a question, I think, for those of you on the B-Space Committee.
Oh.
Because I didn't, I don't think I heard you talk about the Unified Arts Building, which it seems to me you could easily put another floor on, but I didn't hear that. I'm just wondering about whether spending a million dollars for the roof of that building, when it might be something that would be added on to, due to our space concerns there, is a good idea. So that's a general question for those of you on the B-Space Committee.
So-
I don't think-
That's actually another brand-new idea, because that's the first I've heard of that one. But I will say, you know, HMF-
We've already renovated the attic for BATV, though.
Yeah, but I mean, I'll say, HMFH are a consultant who identified, you know, alternatives for expansion of the high school, you know, for dealing with the high school enrollment problem. Didn't touch that subject, so I'm not sure why, but-
Well, I can tell you, we asked them to look at the parking lot next to it as a possible place for expansion, and that was eliminated, and once we did that, the additional space you'd get in that building just isn't worth the cost. That's my opinion.
I'm just curious about that last comment. I understand that there's a sewer line that runs under the parking lot.
Yep, MWR, a big pipe.
Why, what prevents construction over the sewer line?
I think either the terms of the easement, or the town's-
They have an easement, I think, is the point.
Right.
Or the town's concerned that, you know, if there was a problem with it, it would be impossible to rectify with a building on top of it, if you need to excavate it. I don't know if that's in the terms of the easement or not.
We've certainly been advised-
From a practical point of view, we were concerned that our, you know, if they had to repair it, we'd have to accommodate that, and how do you do that when there's a building on top of it?
Right, it's not very many square feet, either, on top.
It's a pretty small lot.
Yeah, it's a pretty small lot. You don't get much bang for your buck, there, is really the bottom line. Mr. Quigley, do you want to tell us about expanding the Unified Arts Building by adding two or three floors?
There's likely to be seismic issues, among other things. It's, again, I don't know about, it's first I've-
That's okay, I didn't mean you, I did not anticipate you would be able to answer that.
Right. The question before you is the award of a contract for the roof and other work associated with it at the Unified Arts Building, in the amount of $1,051,600 to Titan Roofing Incorporated. They were the low bidder among four bidders, and they come recommended by the architect, and if you choose to act favorably on the question, then I would be back probably in a couple of weeks with a contract.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Quigley? Yep.
I'll ask if, are there any opportunities for solar up there? And is anything being done to perhaps potentially outfit the roof for solar in the future?
The, the, we had a lot of budget concerns with this project during design, and thankfully we got very good and competitive bids. So, solar was not really a consideration at that point. However, I don't think any of this precludes addition of solar in the future.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Quigley? Hearing none. I move that we approve awarding a contract for building envelope repairs to the Unified Arts Building, in the amount of $1,051,000 to Titan Roofing of-
$51,600.
Sorry, one-
Which is the actual, I know, it's the bid amount, though, is 600 more than what's on our agenda.
Excuse me.
Well, there's also, it refers to $1,051,000 on that same memo, though. You see, Tony, this-
The amount is $1,051,600.
Okay, then the amount is $1,051,600. I stand corrected. Titan Roofing of Chicopee, Mass. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Banker?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so, do we want to ask about chain-link fences, or upkeep of trees?
The C, D, and E are all contracts you've previously approved, and they're to get your vote back.
Pretty much straightforward, we've already heard about them. So, may we move C, D, and E?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm going to move C, D, and E in the language in the printed calendar. I move that we execute contract number PW14-2, repair of chain-link fencing, in the amount of $119,656.46, to Premier Fence. I move that we execute contract number PW14-3, to upkeep of trees and related work, in the amount of $324,835, with Northern Tree Service. And I move that we execute contract number PW14-4, emergency streetlight and fire alarm services, in the amount of $9,748, with Siemens Industry of Bill Ricker. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Banker?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And then finally, we have some temporary licenses. Are there any questions about items F, H, and I?
F, G, H, I think you have.
Sorry, F, G, H, and I.
No questions.
No questions, all right. Then I am going to move items F, G, H, and I, in the language as printed in the calendar. Approve the application of Family Restaurant, holder of a wine and malt beverage license for the, oh, this is an alternate manager, sorry, for the appointment of an alternate manager, Sybil Boye, Kaktirzey, 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 as an alternate manager. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Banker?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And then the next ones are the temporary licenses. One to Pine Manor, for an event on July 28th, and an event on October 13th. Temporary wine and malt beverage license to the BU Office of Events, for an event on July 6th, and a permit to serve wine and malt beverages to the Lars Anderson Auto Museum in connection with events on July 20th and August 8th. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Banker?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And then we can move to the main calendar. First item is a personnel matter. Mr. Jenikakis?
I'm David Jenikakis, Chief Procurement Officer. I'm here before you, for the authorization to hire, for the buyer position. If you recall, a couple of months ago, I came for the authorization to hire for the procurement officer position. We have filled that position with a promotion, and this is now the result of that promotion from within my office, looking to fill the position that was opened up, the buyer position. The incumbent had been in this position for 12 years, and we're looking forward to bringing somebody on board that has, obviously, all of the skills that he had, but to grow within the office, and to come to the town, and assist the town and the school departments with items such as office supplies, bids, quotes, really working with both myself and the procurement officer, to service all of the town and school departments.
Okay, questions for Mr. Jenikakis? Yes, Selectman Goldstein?
Thank you. Dave, can you describe how you're going to advertise for this position, to see candidates?
Yes, working with the HR Department, they have a standard group of publications, locations, et cetera, that they advertise. I'll also be advertising in the various professional organizations that I'm a part of, that are procurement-related, but I know Lesley and her folks are going to, you know, basically look in various places. I want to cast a very wide net here, because it's an opportunity for me to bring somebody new, conceivably, into the town- new conceivably into the town and into my office. And I want, you know, that unique balance of having a little bit of government experience, a little bit of procurement experience, and being able to, you know, to come in, onboard and learn, as well as service everybody pretty quickly.
I would ask that, in light of our recent discussions in the town about seeking out minority candidates, that I like when you say to put out a wide net. And I'd like to make sure that we're doing everything we can to throw that net as widely as possible, particularly in the direction of where it's, where we'll help find some minority candidates.
Great. Well, I think that would be a great idea. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none. I move that we, whoops, get my words together here. That we approve authorizing the filling of a vacancy in the position of a buyer, C, classification C9, in the Finance Department Purchasing Division. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Benka.
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein.
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jenikakis.
Thank you.
And next is the annual appointments, for which I am going to turn over the microphone to the town administrator, to tell us what we are being asked to do.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. This evening, I'm recommending that the Board take its annual vote to reappoint various management and non-union and other positions that are required to be appointed by the Board. And so that's one part of that vote. The second is to establish the compensation for the next fiscal year, fiscal year 14. And then, in relation to that, I also have some recommendations about benefit changes to the, to the management department head and upper management groups. And then, and then the second part of this is dealing specifically with the Chief of Police. Not only am I asking you to renew his appointment above, but also, he has an employment agreement for three years that I am recommending renewal of that employment agreement. So if I could just sort of bring you through the process a bit?
Sure. Please do.
Okay. So again, this is a vote to renew various department heads that are under your jurisdiction, not only department heads, but some of the confident, non-union confidential employees who are not members of collective bargaining units. And then, there's a number of what I guess I would consider to be more honorary or traditional appointments that are listed. And that was at your table today, and that really should be referred to as attachment A. That was not previously distributed. Then there are specific, then I'm asking for a specific vote on compensation changes. And my proposal, my recommendation to the Board, is that you authorize or approve increases in compensation by one-half of 1% on the last day of this current fiscal year, which is June 30th. And that is because when the Board last approved compensation for department heads last July, the collective bargaining agreements for most employees had not been executed at that time. They, most of them have been resolved, and they were at the level of 2%. So I'm recommending that the Board authorize the department heads and management, non-union employees to catch up that one-half percent. It will not be made, I'm not recommending that be made retroactive, so that there will be a lump sum, but that their, at least are going to, their salary rate will catch up to that 2%. And then, on the first day of the fiscal year, the next fiscal year, which is July 1st, that the Board authorize a 2% increase, which is the amount that has been negotiated. All the collective bargaining agreements that have been approved to date are at 2% levels. In connection with that, I am recommending some benefit changes for management. We are in the process of doing a more comprehensive review of how the benefits are throughout the town. But at least in, at this time, I would like to recommend that the Board adopt changes that they have done for many of the other employees of the town, basically benefit concessions. And that includes personal leave accrual. We're changing the manner of personal leave accrual, reducing the amount of personal leave accrual. That would be grandfathered, in other words, employees who are currently in employment today would continue to enjoy the benefits that are in the current personal leave accrual, but any future employees would have a different benefit schedule. The same with sick leave accrual. And then, for current employees and future employees, we are recommending that the town require direct deposit and the issuance of electronic pay advisories, as opposed to actual paper pay stubs and paychecks and pay stubs. So those are the benefit concessions that I'm proposing at this time. And we, as I said, we are going to be doing a fairly comprehensive review of benefit changes, or benefits amongst, across the town, and we may have other recommendations for you in the future. So at this point, I'd be happy to answer questions about this part, and then can move on.
Questions for members of the Board? Yes, Selectman Goldstein?
Just wanted to ask a very simple question. This is all within what we budgeted for FY14.
Correct.
Including the half percent bump, which I understand is not retroactive, but does get added to the base.
That's correct. We, when we built the FY14 budget, we built it on top of 2%. So yes, the answer is yes.
Thank you.
Other question? Yes, Selectman Daley.
This is really more of a comment, Mr. Kleckner, and to those of them who are here. I think we have an extremely hard-working staff throughout the town, and I'm happy to vote for this. I'm very proud of the hard work. I continue to feel as I, you know, when I go elsewhere in the, in the area, that this town looks better and is run better than most of our, I won't say competitors, perhaps.
Just say neighbors.
Neighbors. But, and I really do appreciate how many, I know, working here involves a lot of coming-to-night meetings and a lot of public involvement, and it requires some patience, and I certainly do appreciate the hard work that all of you put in. Thank you.
Yes, and I'm going to second that, and I think we had a wonderful example that we spoke about earlier this evening, of every, every possible department who could contribute to making the polling places at least comfortable to stay in during the day on Tuesday, when it was clear on Monday that there was going to be 95 degrees, and nobody could have planned for it in advance, and everybody from every department chipped in and helped and got it all done. And that's just an example of the kind of teamwork that Selectman Daley was talking about. So we very much appreciate it. Any other comments from members? Then I'm going to-
If I could just, I want to say thank you to Selectman Daley and do it. I'm embarrassed, I have it in my memo, but I didn't say it publicly. And I also want to say that I very much, very, very pleased and proud of the department heads and the upper management of the town. I mentioned in the, in my memo that this is a group of highly qualified and experienced and motivated people who are leaders, not only in Brookline in Massachusetts, but nationally. Many of our department heads are very active in public policy issues associated with their particular profession. The other thing I would want to mention is that we've been pushing department heads to deal with some new concepts, goals and objectives, and performance management. And we've really been experimenting and throwing a lot at them, and they've been great. And we, as you know, we did incorporate some of that in our budget process, and we're going to continue to do that. So it's just not been business as usual. We have been challenging them with some of those new ideas and concepts.
Any other comments before we take our vote? Actually, maybe before we vote, Mr. Kleckner, you want to mention the chief's contract?
Sure.
Because that's going to be, we're going to do this all sort of in a serial vote.
Right. So the Chief of Police is one of the, the department head positions that have the ability and the, to execute an employment agreement with the town, with the Board. And Mr. Chief O'Leary's contract is expiring this June. It was a three-year contract. We are proposing that the contract be renewed for an additional three years through, through 2016. There's some minor adjustments associated with, with the contract, but for the most part, it's the same contract terms and conditions of the contract as before. And what I said about the department heads is definitely the case for Chief O'Leary. He is a leader in his profession of Chief of Police. He is a leader in this region, very involved in a lot of the inter-agency cooperative ventures that happen, and we're quite frankly, very helpful in dealing with the Marathon bombing and the aftermath. And I think the chief is always reticent to toot his own horn, but I'm going to do it for him. And I'm very, very pleased that he, he's our chief, and hopefully, with your approval, will be for, for another three years.
Okay. Yes, Selectman Daley?
I'll just add that I am delighted to renew Chief O'Leary's contract. I think you do an excellent job, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments from members of the Board? Yes?
Echo, selectman Daley, and say, it really is a privilege to be able to work with you, Chief.
Ditto.
Right. And, and I would say that one of the things that we all appreciate and are proud of is that in a crisis like the Marathon, we nobody, everybody is trained and ready and prepared. And in a mini-crisis like, how do we make the poll workers comfortable? The emergency EMT folks come in and offer their services, and everybody pulls together on every kind of situation, and we all really appreciate that. We appreciate the leadership that we get. And, and just as a footnote, I know that there, when we heard from the report on understanding Brookline and the demographics in Brookline, that one of the reasons that young, single women enjoy living in Brookline is that they know they're safe here. And that's all part of the environment of safety that we get from our police department. So thank you, Chief.
Thank you. If I could just say, just one, one comment in that, and I think I say it just about every time that I'm up here, I'm really fortunate to be the chief of a department that has the people that we have, and they have the knowledge and they have the abilities, and they really have the desire to do the right thing. And these are just examples of what our officers do day in and day out. It's really a privilege for me to be able to, to lead them. And I say that from, from the bottom of my heart. It's been great. I've been doing it now 18 years. This is actually the sixth, three-year contract that I've been coming in front of the Board for, so it just gets better.
Well, we definitely want to keep you around, so I want you to know that.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now, we have a series of votes to take, and we'll start, we're going to do this one first? Or is that an attachment?
This, this one here are these three votes, but this one should refer to, no, it's the third vote.
Yeah, right.
That should refer to three attachments, A, B, and C.
Okay. So my question to you is, is this a separate one, or is it incorporated into here?
You should deal with it.
We'll do these. Okay. So members of the Board, you're going to be looking at page eight dash three, so that you can see where the vote is. And I may or may not read it all out, but for your reference, eight dash nine is attachment A, and it is the appointments attachment with all of the named individuals. And then we have a vote for a wage adjustment, and finally, well, there are- Benefits, right, right. So we have several different votes, but I just want to make sure everybody understands eight dash nine is the appointments component. All right? So I move that we approve a, that we make the following annual appointments. Nope, we're not doing that. Oh, I see. We don't have to do that because it's attachment A. All right, fine. All right. So the vote is to approve a wage adjustment of 5% on June-
Zero point five.
0.5% on June 30th, 2013. Sorry, folks. I was raising expectations. And of 2% on July 1, 2013, for the positions on the department head pay plan, mid-management, professional, and technical pay plan, and for other non-union, non-seasonal, non-temporary positions. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Benka.
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein.
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Second vote, to approve modifications in the benefits for positions on the department head pay plan, mid-management, professional, technical pay plan, and for other eligible non-union, non-seasonal, non-temporary positions as follows. And I am not going to read this out, but there are three items: personal leave accrual, sick leave accrual, and direct deposit. Yep, there are more, four items. Direct deposit and electronic pay advisories, in the language that's printed. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Benka.
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein.
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And finally, to approve annual appointments of department heads and other personnel for July 1, 2013, through June 30th, 2014, as recommended by the town administrator, and on the attached sheets entitled Attachment A, Attachment B, and Attachment C. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Benka.
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein.
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We got through it all.
I think, was the chief's contract?
And finally, whoops, that's, that's, we finished the group. Now we're going to do the one. Finally, I move that we approve the reappointment of the police chief, Daniel O'Leary, for a three-year term from July 1, 2013, through June 30th. Sorry. June 30th, 2016, per the employment agreement recommended for approval by the town administrator, which you can treat as attachment A. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Benka.
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein.
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We've appointed everybody.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have a grant of locations for NSTAR. Mr. Ditto.
Good evening. NSTAR is here tonight to petition the Board for three separate grants of location, and they are on Sewell Avenue, Stearns Road, and Verndale Street. We mailed the statutory seven-day notices to all of ours. We have reviewed the plans, and we take no exceptions to their requests. We have a representative from NSTAR here tonight, should you have any questions. And again, this is a public hearing.
Right. Okay. From members of the Board, are there questions? Yes, Selectman Goldstein?
Quick question for our NSTAR representative.
If you would mind just identifying yourself into the microphone, please. Sheila Gillis.
Yes, much as we enjoy seeing you, it's, we've noticed you're here basically two meetings in a row, and I'm just wondering if we're getting some special attention from NSTAR, or if there's a general improvement plan?
There's certainly plenty of equipment out there.
What's giving rise to so many new locations in such a short period of time, is my question?
This has been an ongoing project, to replace all the old underground system with a more reliable one. And currently now, we're in the Brookline area.
So can we expect to hear, to see more of you in the, in the coming weeks?
Possibly.
Again, not that we don't enjoy your presence.
Possibly.
Give us, can you give us some idea, like how many, how many more of these locations do you think we're likely to see?
I'm really not sure.
Not sure.
As far as, no.
All right. Selectman Daley?
Yeah, no, I actually have to give you a compliment about your efforts to upgrade our service in Brookline. My power used to go out regularly, and particularly like a stretch of hot days like we just had. That's true. I would have had my power go out sometime during that, big storms, my power would go out. It's been much better lately, so thank you very much.
Selectman Wyszynski?
How will the surrounding butters and residents be affected? Will they hear noise, and what hours?
I'm not sure what the hours would be, that's the town.
The typical working hours for NSTAR is 7 to 3:30, and it'll be backhoe, excavating, you know, front-end loaded, dumping stones. So it'll be a typical construction, but it'll be worked during the normal working hours.
I have a follow-up on that, because in real life, and it's one we've already approved, there has been work ongoing on Walnut Street. I think this is a question to Mr. Ditto, and I discovered on my way from my home, which is near Walnut Street on the other side of Route 9, that all of the barriers were still in place, even though the equipment and the contractors were no longer present. That would have been at 6 o'clock PM. In other words, the, the streets, streets were blocked off.
That was today?
Access was blocked today.
That was today?
I think yesterday as well.
Yeah. National Grid is in the process of digging test pits to locate the gas main that they have to replace, so I think that's what was happening today.
So, it's the contractor who's left the equipment in place, though? The barriers? Or are those us?
I'll swing by on the way home tonight to take a look at it. That's news to me. It shouldn't have been left there, but I'll find about, find out about it.
Okay, thank you. Not trying to blame NSTAR for this. I was really trying to think about normal practice for, if you said the work would be ended probably around 3:30, I was curious to know why the barriers were still up at six o'clock. Okay. Yes, Selectman Benka?
Thank you. The butters have all gotten notice of the project going on, but one of the issues, I believe, right, at this point, prior to this public hearing, but one of the issues that we've heard, and I think not specific to NSTAR, it may be National Grid, is the notification of when the project is precisely going to start on a street and cars, you know, driveways being ripped up or blocked or, or whatever. What, what is the further notification process going to be when the work is going to commence, when we're within a day or two of the work commencing?
Typically, we have the utility flyer, fly of the neighborhood, basically with a letter stating what's going to happen, what you can expect for inconvenience, and whether you have to have your car out of the driveway at any particular time. So, we try to do that two or three days in advance of the actual construction.
And it's, sorry, is it the DPW who does that or is it the contractor?
No, we, we pre-read the letter that they send out to make sure it's.
But they are responsible for actually distributing it?
Yeah, but they, yes.
Sorry, Mr. Benka.
Yeah, no, and, and that, I, I was just going to ask that that is part of the established process and will be happening here as well because this is, these actually are really quite long.
Right.
Segments of conduit that you're dealing with and will affect, I think, a number of residents and the lengths of a number of streets. You are monitoring that that will happen.
Yes, that will happen.
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, okay.
One more question. One other thing that's occurred to me recently as I see these new locations go in is that a lot of them are replacing existing services. They're running parallel to it. And we always see grant of locations, I never see abandonment of locations. Is there ever a time where we go back and declare things to be obsolete and, and take back those locations?
For this particular utility, we don't, mainly because what's in the ground now and failing is what they call a split fiber main. The fiber is direct burial, there's no conduit. So, when that's gone, it's just left there to decompose. The other ones, it's, it's particularly like a, a National Grid, very difficult to pull the, the old pipe out because basically the new pipe goes right beside it.
And manholes and there's, there's never an occasion where we can do away with some of the, you know, the infrastructure, maybe not the conduits themselves, but the manholes and services.
The manholes, we definitely can get rid of.
Yeah. And do we take a look at those and see, look for opportunities to get rid of that stuff?
Yeah, when it happens, we, we do take advantage of that.
Eventually, our streets are going to be one giant manhole cover, you know?
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak either in favor or in opposition to this petition with regard to Sewell Avenue, 480 feet east of St. Paul Street, or Sterns Road, approximately 110 feet east of Sewell Avenue, and Verndale Street, approximately 776 feet southwest of Harvard Street?
There, let me just add, there are other distances in each of those paragraphs, another 212 feet on Sewell Avenue, another 752 feet on Sterns Road, another 23 feet on Sterns Road, and another 470, 476 feet on Verndale. This is, this is really a major chunk of work here.
Right. Seeing and hearing none. Thank you very much and I think we can move to take a vote, which, now that we have to approve the petition of NSTAR Electric for permission to construct and a location for a line of conduits, manholes, with the necessary wires and cables therein, under the following public way or ways. Sewell Avenue, westerly, approximately 480 feet east of St. Paul Street, a distance of 212 feet, install one new manhole. Sterns Road, easterly, approximately 110 feet east of Sewell Avenue, a distance of 752 and a half feet, conduit from pole 136 slash one to pole 138 slash eight, a distance of 23 feet conduit from, well, 23 feet of conduit, and install one new manhole. And finally, on Verndale Street, southwesterly, approximately 776 feet southwest of Harvard Street, a distance of 476 feet conduit. And I think that's it. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next item is a common victular license, a common victular change in manager and review of hours. Osaka.
The record reflect that I'm going to recuse myself due to a prior business relationship with the applicant.
Yes, indeed. You may be excused. And, welcome?
Thank you. Scott Gladstone, representing the Osaka Restaurant. And Mark Chen is here, the new manager, well, proposed new manager.
So, we have a recommendation with regard to the manager. Seems that he was operating the, an identical establishment in North Hampton?
Yes.
Right? He's properly Safe Service certified. I don't think there were any questions raised by any of the reviewing authorities. Are there any questions from board members about the change of manager? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak either in favor or in opposition to the change of manager at Osaka from Jin Lin to, I'm going to get this wrong, Ding Xi Shen, who is with us?
He's gave you the thumbs up on that, Nancy.
Yes, all right. I'm not going to try it again.
I refer, refer to him as his chosen Englishized name, Mark.
Well, I, I understood that, but I feel.
Which sounds just like his Chinese name.
And, and I appreciate that and I have to say, I, I really would like to try. I feel we owe it to try, even if we don't always get it right. So, is there anyone here wishing to speak on this change of manager? Seeing and hearing none. Then the next item, well, we'll do these votes together, but the next item before us is the hours of operation that were originally approved in October of 2012 and the board made a commitment to review the hours to see if there were any observed complaints, either recorded complaints or observations from neighbors with regard to the operating hours, which at this time are Sunday through Thursday from 11:30 AM until midnight and on Friday and Saturday from 11:30 AM until 2:00 AM. So, is there anyone here who wishes to speak either in favor or in opposition of these operating hours for Osaka Restaurant? Seeing and hearing none. Our members of the board, would you like to make a comment? Yes.
Yeah, I actually have a question.
Sure.
The Friday and Saturday hours run until 2:00 AM, the Sunday to Thursday hours run until 12:00 midnight. The Osaka website does not advertise those hours. The Osaka website shows Monday to Thursday and Sunday until 11:00 PM and Friday and Saturday until 12:00 AM, rather than 2:00 AM on Friday and Saturday. And so, it's 11, 11:00 PM instead of 12:00 midnight, Sunday through Thursday, and 12:00 AM instead of 2:00 AM on Friday and Saturday. My question is, are you actually open until 2:00 AM? Are you using the hours on Friday and Saturday? And are you open until midnight, Sunday to Thursday? Are you using the hours that have been granted previously?
Okay, again, Ding Xi Chen, that's right. And I think we open the hour just like Monday, I mean, Sunday to Thursday, that's the hour we haven't changed in the website. I think we haven't to upgrade the website yet. The hour, the hours are open whatever the, in there, we just, I mean, Sunday to Thursday, 11:30 to midnight, Friday and Saturday, 11:30 to 2:00 AM.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so that question number one is, were you actually using the hours? Comment number one is, the, as I recall, the hours were granted, given the proximity to a residential location, the hours were granted on a test basis. And we've been in place now for three months, four months, six months?
Actually, more than six months.
More than six.
We weren't able to schedule right on six months.
The later closing hours aren't advertised, so I'm wondering whether we really have a legitimate test of the impact on the residential butters.
Well, perhaps I could ask Mr. Chen, if there actually are patrons during those, it's, I imagine that the critical time here is the midnight to 2:00 AM on Friday and Saturday night, so can you speak to that? Do you have people in the restaurant between midnight and 2:00 AM on the weekends?
Weekend, yes.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I think the, the thing is, though, that we haven't, I, I haven't seen any complaints.
No, no.
I don't think we've received any complaints and people were concerned about, would it be too noisy, but they're, they neither sent emails in nor have they come tonight, so I don't.
Right.
Obviously, the noise isn't bothering them too much.
Right. I, my, I, I think the direction in which I'm going personally is certainly not to cut back the allowable hours, but I would, I would do what we did previously, which is to extend it for six months, rather than making it a, a, unlimited extension. And I would think it would be fair to see it in operation with it being advertised.
So, I, I, my two responses to that is, one, it is an actual experiment because he's reported that by hook or crook, there, there have been patrons there during that time. And the other thing I would say is this license is going to be up for review on an annual basis anyway. The reason for the six-month review was to do something sooner than that.
Right.
The truth is, six months would get you to the annual review.
Right, I just, I just don't want there to be an understanding, I mean, I, I really think.
Well, hours are never granted.
Right, but I, I think, I consider this still in a test period, given, you know, if, if, if I were somebody in Boston and I went to the website to look, I'd say, hey, it closes at midnight, I'm not going to go. So, I don't think you really have experienced the conditions that you would experience or you have not necessarily experienced the conditions that you would experience if this were widely disseminated.
I understand. That was clearly a mistake. It was not to their benefit to not advertise their extended hours.
Right.
Again, thank you for you letting me know.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
That's good, Selectman Benka, now, so we can get a full and fair test of an absolutely full restaurant on Friday and Saturday night.
Okay, so, we have the change of manager and also, in a sense, it's just simply confirming the hours that we've conditionally approved. We're not proposing a change in the hours, is that right?
Yeah. And, and I would, I would just make clear that this is a conditional approval. I, I do think that this is a, really is potentially very sensitive location compared to some of the other purely commercial locations where we have the two o'clock closing time.
Moving along, then I move that we approve the change of manager from Jin Lin to Ding Xi Chen. And I move that we continue the hours of operation, Sunday through Thursday, 11:30 AM until midnight, and Friday and Saturday, 11:30 AM until 2:00 AM, with the condition that we will review at the annual renewal time.
Good.
All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Change of subject and we move to the Housing Advisory Board and committing home funds for Dummer Street. Ms. Price? Mr. Blood?
Thank you. I'm Fran Price, Housing Development Manager of the, of the housing, for the Planning Department. And this is an opening of a public hearing on the.
Right, and just, I would like to be clear in my own mind, we've already had you give us a presentation on funding for Dummer Street. Is this a different funding stream?
This is another line item that had to be separately voted on.
Okay.
Which was not available when we last programmed money.
Okay.
Since that time, it's been clear that, that, it's not very much, but $13,228 that was in a line item called Chodo operating expenses would not be used in the next year and that we are asking the board to approve putting that money also in the Dummer Street project. So, that requires a substantial change to fiscal year 13, one-year action plan and a reprogramming of that money to the 86 Dummer Street project. And so, that is, that's really the, the, the one part of the vote that requires public hearing. The second part that we're asking is that we're now facing the deadline for actually legally committing the funds, or at least a part of the funds, to Dummer Street. And we've been working on a, a funding agreement for all the money which we've programmed in the past, including this, should it be voted, as well as the fiscal 14 money. It would add up to a total of $1,084,969.
Actually, mine says 100. Yeah, oh, sorry, you're right.
That last number?
Yep, got it.
And, and that would be a funding agreement contingent on the project getting all of the funds it needs to, to get to construction loan closing. That would have to be signed in the next few weeks, so we're asking for an authorization of the Director of Planning or the Acting Director to sign a, a home funding, project funding agreement for 86 Dummer Street for the amount of $1,084,969.
Okay. Questions for Ms. Price or Mr. Blood? I mean, we do sort of understand it, even though it's very complicated. All right? No questions, then we can move to a vote.
Is our Housing Advisory Board unanimous on?
It's a public hearing, I think.
That's true. It is a public hearing.
Can I just ask Mr. Blood if, if the Housing Advisory Board is unanimous on?
Yes, they discussed this on their agenda and they are supporting this recommendation unanimously.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing on reprogramming of home funds for use at 86 Dummer Street. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak either in favor or in opposition to this reprogramming? Seeing and hearing none. We will move to a vote. And I want to be clear that we're being asked to take three, or it's a three-part, one vote in three parts or three votes? Do you care? All right, it's going to be one vote in three parts. I move that we make a substantial change to the fiscal year 2013, one-year action plan by eliminating the budget line item for Chodo operating expenses. I move that we agree to reprogram, approve reprogramming, $13,228 from Chodo operating expenses to 86 Dummer Street project. And I move to authorize the Director of the Department of Planning and Community Development or Acting Director to sign on behalf of the town, a home project funding agreement for the 86 Dummer Street project, approved as to form by Town Council, including all reprogrammed funds for a. including all reprogrammed funds for a total, projected, projected total of $1,084,969. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daly?
Aye.
Selectmen Banker?
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectmen Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And you have another item, an equally complicated item.
No, it's less complicated, that's why I'm giving this one.
Good.
I'm Roger Blood, Chair of the Housing Advisory Board.
Housing Advisory Board.
Yes. First of all, I'd like to say that the entire Housing Advisory Board is bringing this project of 5153 and 5557 Beale Street before you for recommended support and funding with a great deal of enthusiasm. This, this stage, this kickoff of the project financially is really the culmination of about 10 years of advanced effort, going back, the beginning of which, the Housing Division and Fran Price began reaching out to existing private, or owners of private lodging houses, and making them aware of the town's interest in affordable lodging houses and upgrading lodging houses with nonprofit sponsorship over the long term. And so this, this particular project is, is an outgrowth, successful outgrowth of that effort, as you're going to hear a little bit more about shortly from Pine Street Inn, who's going to be the new sponsor. I might also add just a couple of other quick things. You recall the town meeting recently passed zoning warrant, Article 16, which allowed something called enhanced lodging house units. This is something that the Commonwealth supports generally, and we think it's a good addition to the town's housing policy, but in particular, this particular project is going to benefit from the ability for individual affordable lodging house units to have cooking, limited cooking facilities within each unit. And finally, from a broader perspective, if you remember, I'm sure you remember all the details of the housing component of our comprehensive plan of a few years ago, but one of the, one of the important features of that, actually, that the community, we think, continues to support, is that, that we give, we at the, Board of Selectmen and the Housing Board, give priority attention to advancing our goals with the use of the town's existing housing stock in comparison with adding mass and new, new, new construction, new development around the town and in our neighborhoods. And so, of course, this particular project is using two existing lodging houses very consistently with that, with that goal. So at this moment, I'd like to just introduce Jan Griffin, who's the Director of Planning for the Pine Street Inn, to tell you a little bit about the project itself, and then we'll, we'll wrap up with the specifics of our recommendations.
Sure. Welcome, Ms. Griffin.
Thank you very much. Happy to be here tonight. As Roger mentioned, the outreach that the Department of Planning and Community Development did many years ago has benefited Pine Street in a couple of ways. In particular, we never would have met the Schultz family, who are the owners of the Beale Street lodging houses. It just never would have happened. And so that relationship, we've now been managing their properties for nine years. Seven of the tenants who were there when we took over, when, when we started to manage are still there. At the point that we started our management, a third of those units were vacant. Only unit, only market rates were being charged at that point, when, before we took over. So it really was not affordable housing. At the point that we took over, we put our policies in place, and people since then have been paying only 30% of their income in rent, and the buildings are full. So it really has provided new opportunities for affordable housing in Brookline, in the state that it's in today, which is very similar to the state it was in in 2004. So we are very grateful to come here tonight and talk to you about this project, because it's going to do a lot of things. First and foremost, it's going to preserve lodging house housing, lodging house units that have been there for decades. And that's a very important preservation strategy, not only as I know from the town's perspective, but also from Pine Street's perspective. Secondly, the creation of enhanced SROs will enhance people's quality of life. Having your own bathroom, having your own kitchenette, but also having common space in which to build community within the residence is a very important and stabilizing effect on people's lives. Thirdly, the, what will happen is, these buildings will become permanently affordable as a result of the town's investment, and hopefully, we don't have the ship, but the state's investment in these properties. And permanent affordability, again, is a very key component to what we hope to achieve long-term and keep those units in circulation. Finally, the rehab will be extensive. Right now, the smallest unit in that building is 118 square feet. It's tiny. And so what we plan to do is to create these enhanced lodging house units, and in addition to that, there'll also be a major upgrade of the exterior of the buildings, which will be great for the neighbors and the community. So we're very grateful to the HAB for the vote on June 18th at their meeting, the vote to recommend to you. We have been invited by the state, by DHCD, to submit a full one-stop application for financing by August 2nd. And we, that was a result of a pre-application in April, so we feel very fortunate to have that opportunity. It's by invitation only now, as you know, the, the structure has changed. So we, I think that's, I think I'll start right there. So things are going well, and we are very excited about this project. And I hope, really, thank you for the time tonight, and we really enjoy and value our partnership projects with the town of Brookline. We've done a lot with you over the years. We've been here since 1984. It was our first housing, first foray into permanent affordable housing, and we look to continue that relationship for a long time to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Griffin?
I think there might be a few members of the public here who want to come.
Well, we will do that, but Selectmen first, always.
Yeah, I actually have one question. Are any or all of the three of you planning to remain for the lodging house?
Yes.
Regulations?
Yes.
Item that's next, because I do have some questions about that. Okay.
All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak either in favor or in opposition to this project at 5153 and 5557 Beale Street? If you wish to speak, you have to come to the microphone.
I just have a point with me.
Please identify yourself for our recorder, please.
Yeah, my name is Art Kalak, and I actually own four lodging houses in various cities, including one in Brookline. What's the difference between an apartment building with kitchens and bathrooms and an SRO? That's interesting, because zoning is very complicated in Massachusetts, and I do have one building like that. It's this 15-studio apartment, and the city says, I don't need an SRO, it's another city outside of here. But it's an interesting concept, because I know I tried years ago at my rooming house on Beacon Street, 1019 Beacon Street, to put another kitchen in, and I was turned down. There's a kitchen in the basement.
The, the, the town, Brookline Town Meeting has recently passed a bylaw amendment that permits extended SROs, expanded SROs.
Enhanced.
Enhanced, sorry. Only in places where they are deeded permanently affordable.
Okay, so that's okay.
So it only would be for an organization or an owner who wishes to establish permanently affordable units, which is the mission of Pine Street Inn, and in this case, these will be deeded permanently affordable. The only units that would be allowed to have the enhanced SROs would be qualified by their affordability. And that's because, in part, we understand that the folks who will be living in these units don't have access to other kinds of units.
Yeah, no, for instance, mine has a kitchen in the basement, and we have five stories. We wanted to put a kitchen up in the upper room, take a small room out, and we got turned down many years ago. So that's a logical extension of convenience for people, because a lot of these people in my SRO have been there for many, many, many years. And they're getting older, and honestly, walking down to the basement is difficult for them. It's just something to think about, it's nothing.
Well, I think you should check with the Building Department and see, I don't think we're capable of answering your question.
Yeah, I just have a question, but thank you very much.
But call the Building Department and have a discussion.
Right.
Yeah, if I, if I could just expand on that, actually, from the point of view of the zoning bylaw committee, which actually recommended the change that created the concept of enhanced SROs. Mr. Kalak, and the, the concept, as Chairman DeWitt said, is that there can be individual cooking facilities in the individual units, only if there is a permanent deed restriction on the property. The zoning change did not speak to the question of having a common space on, on the floor. And I suspect that that is a building code or some other issue. I'm not aware of any particular zoning issue that, that would be involved with that. Do you know, was it building code or zoning, or, or what?
This was many years ago.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
Licensed lodging houses are permitted to have a common kitchen.
Right, exactly.
But they would also have to meet zoning and other code.
Exactly, but the location of that unit, I don't, I don't know of any reason why it would have to be in the basement as opposed to an upper floor, as opposed to some concern about building code. Yeah.
Okay.
We should also, if you don't mind, we should also add for, for anyone else who happens to be listening, too, that along with the permanent deed restriction for affordability, there are various other enhanced fire, safety, and health code requirements that come with adding those in-room kitchens, too. So, which are all part of the application that we're hearing right now, and we'll discuss those regulations in a little bit more detail in our next agenda item.
Other questions specifically with the Beale Street, Pine Street Inn project? I have a question, and that is, where will the residents be housed during the renovations?
We've engaged a consultant to help us with that whole process, Judy Cohen, who's done this many times before, highly recommended. What we anticipate happening is the project would be phased, we would do one building first, get it completely done, and then move the X number of tenants, we hope, we hope to achieve 30 units.
Okay.
We don't have definitive plans yet. So then the 15 tenants would then move into the completely rehabbed building. And then we would need to find other accommodations for those tenants while we rehab the second building, and then move those people back into the rehabbed units. Some people, depending upon our numbers at the time that construction starts, some people might need to be permanently relocated. We're going from a total today of 37 units to what-
So you'll reduce the total number?
It will, yes, yes, because of the, in the expansion of the unit sizes.
Right. Okay, any other questions? Then, again, a series of votes.
Chairman DeWitt, I need to make a few additional comments in requesting the vote, if I might. First of all, the, with the, even with the reduced number of units that Jan Griffin mentioned in the range of 27 to 30, although the, the amount of the funding that we're going to be asking for, about 1.3 million on a per-unit basis, is still well under $50,000 per unit. So in one way that we look at making our money go as far as possible per unit, this is, this is still a very good investment for the town. And in another way, that all of these units, as individual rooms, will be counted as 40B eligible, rather than a fraction of them. The, the advancing of the funds, and particularly of our concern about the security of the funds when we put the town's trust funds forward, is going to be well secured. The amount is going to go towards the purchase of, purchase price of one of the two buildings on Beale Street. And the, the current appraisal as of January of this year is well above the amount that we're going to be, that we're going to be putting in and leaving in this, in this project. There's one aspect of what we're asking for tonight, which is a little bit different, that I think is worth just a moment of, of explanation, if I, if I might. And to start with, I think you know that we try to conserve the housing trust funds and, and use them in as nimble a way as possible, usually by making them short-term and trying to replace them with federal home or CDBG funds to the largest and soonest extent possible, and also by getting as much leveraging of other, of other state and federal funds. In the, and with particular, with particular regard to CDBG, which is, which is a major part of the funding plan for this project, in all of our past efforts, and successfully so, to do this, we've been able to build up CDBG fund allocations over an advanced series of time periods and, and meet HUD requirements to spend the money by certain deadlines. I think you're generally familiar with that, with that approach. And as also, I think you know, the, the annual funding of CDBG now and going forward is, is being reduced every year. And, and the, the smaller amounts are harder to amass and, and spend effectively. So what we're proposing here for the first time is that, is that the use of CDBG funds is forward-looking, rather than an accumulation up to the current point. And by that, we mean that we're, we're seeking to structure this, this financing at Beale Street with a substantial advance of housing trust funds to be covered by a commitment, which would require your support of the next year or two of, of funds that would normally go to CDBG, CDBG funds that would normally go to housing, but might not necessarily, if they weren't channeled, into reducing our trust funds obligation, they might be channeled to other purposes, including the Brookline Housing Authority, whom we're currently talking with about this. So with that little preface, the vote that the HAB has taken and is asking you to replicate tonight has four parts to it, the fourth of which has to do with the CDBG funding aspect I just described briefly. The first is for you to vote, if you would, to commit 1.288, 1.288 million, $920 to the Pine Street Inn, an estimated 579 to 700,000, of which would be available from CDGB fundings already programmed for such use, and the balance from the housing trust fund towards, towards the acquisition of these two properties, which would be repayable on demand if the, if the project fails to proceed within, within five years. Second is to authorize the Director of Planning and Community Development, or Caribruten, to sign the necessary documents to effect this financing. The third is to authorize the Selectmen DeWitt, as your Chair, to sign the letter, the general letter to the, to the state in support of Pine Street Inn's one-stop application for funding, for state funding support for this property. And fourth, then, would be to commit to the future repayment of the housing trust fund loan into this property from future CDB allocations at the fastest rate possible, although still considering other town priorities for CDBG funding. So that's what we're asking for.
Okay, and just to be clear, we cannot commit legally to the use of future CDBG funds at this time?
Yes, it's not.
And I assume the language is drafted to recognize that?
Yes, yes, it is. And, and in effect, it's committing to your own future intentions, if you will.
Right, right. Questions, members of the board?
Just a comment. I, I think that the protective clause in that last vote is the considering other town priorities. And obviously, particularly with CDBG allocations being cut, there's going to be a tension between housing authority projects and repayment of the trust fund. And I think as we look out the next year or two or three, it will depend on what the housing trust may have as a potential use and what the housing authority may have as potential projects. And I, as I read this vote, this is going to be a decision of the CDBG Committee, and ultimately of the Board of Selectmen, balancing those two, clearly worthwhile, but- but frankly, competing needs.
Yes, that's an absolutely correct way of looking at this. As you know, there's another project that's not on the agenda tonight, which is also highly favored by us, and I believe the Board of Selectmen, which is the development of a significant number of low-income rental housing units at the housing authority's Dummer Street site, which is currently also the subject of a substantial amount of funding requested, and we're anticipating a substantial increase in that amount of funding. So what kind of goes hand in glove here, if you will, is our current discussions with the housing authority about, especially the prospective increase in our advancing of housing trust funds to them, and their ability to see the huge direct benefit of that, to get that major project off the ground in relation to their other precedent, near-term future priorities for CDBG sub-funds. So I think there's a certain amount of logic on this that should come together very nicely.
And obviously, the existence of the housing trust fund does provide flexibility, particularly given the uncertainty of CDBG funding going forward. So that is an issue. I think one other issue that I'm curious about, and this is not something to resolve today, but the town's financial policies, Sean, do have a provision for replenishing the housing trust fund out of free cash. And how will that work? Have we thought about how that will work if the housing trust fund has been spent, but there is a commitment to repay from CDBG?
I don't think our policy has anything to do with the value of the housing trust fund. It has to do with the value of the, if it falls below a-
Yeah, yeah. If it falls below an amount.
Yes, the policy says if the fund balance at the end of the fiscal year is below $5 million, then whatever's left after the first four priorities, liability fund, general reserve fund, unreserved fund balance, and capital, 15% of that goes into the fund balance. So, and into the funds. So if the fund balance is below $5 million, that's the trigger.
Yeah. And I guess one would, perhaps we should think about what the application of that would be if the fund balance is below $5 million, but there is an obligation to repay $700,000 or a million of that.
I just made a note of that, so.
I mean, that's happened in the past. I mean, there's been monies that come back into the fund.
Goes up and down and down and up, Selectman Binka. It is not a static fund, let me tell you.
The realities in this case are that after these two major projects, Dummer Street and Beale Street, the projected balance in the housing trust would be about $3.5 million, so that whether or not the $700,000 of CDBG repayment promises or obligations was included or not included. It will still be well below the $5 million.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? For your information, Selectmen, the vote language that we're going to be following is both on the calendar, but it's also in the item 12 as amended, just so that you can see there's been a change.
Just one brief comment. This sounds like a great project, and I appreciate all the hard work that went into getting it done. And I'm particularly happy whenever we can get a little closer to our 10% goal of affordable units.
Right. And I have to say, I am pleased that the first enhanced SROs will be included in this project. So I am going to move financial commitments for the Beale Street lodging house redevelopment, committing $1,288,920 to Pine Street Inn, an estimated $579,000 to $700,000, of which will be available from CDBG funds already programmed as a loan toward the acquisition of 5153 and 5557 Beale Street, repayable if the project fails to proceed. And I move that we authorize the Director of Planning and Community Development, or in his or her absence, Kara Bruton, to sign on behalf of the town of Brookline all required documentation approved by Town Council related to such CDBG and housing trust loans. And to authorize Board of Selectmen Chair to sign the attached letters in support of Pine Street Inn for its August 2, 2013, one-stop application to the Commonwealth for funding for the Beale Street properties. And finally, to approve the question of committing to the repayment of housing trust loan, of the housing trust loan, from future CDBG allocations at the fastest rate possible, considering other town priorities. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And we look forward to hearing progress reports.
Thank you very much.
And frankly, good luck on August 2.
Thank you so much. May I add just one other quick comment? For those of you that have gray hair to match ours, Fran and I have been pairing up here for 16 years, together, asking for you to approve spending for various projects and initiatives. And as I think you know, Fran's going to be retiring a little later this summer, so the pairing is going to end.
Fran is kind of sneaking away.
This may be the last time you see us together, asking you for money. So, thank you.
Well, I just hope that she will be available as a consultant, because there is no one who understands the arcane financing of affordable housing the way the pair of you do. And I am assuming that it will require at least some generosity on Ms. Price's part to help her replacement get up to speed. I can't imagine anybody walking into those shoes.
So happy to hear you say that, Selectman DeWitt. Thank you.
We appreciate very much all of the time and the extraordinary knowledge that she's given the town.
Absolutely. Here, here.
Here, here. Okay. Our final, actually, we have two more items tonight. One is, but the final lodging house item, is a public hearing on revised lodging house regulations. Attorney Associate Town Council, Korea, are you going to walk us through the changes? Are you just there to listen?
Well, I could just open and give a little background.
Oh, yes, please.
Or one of you members of the Licensing Review Committee could also do that.
I was actually hoping you were going to volunteer to highlight the changes.
Okay. Yeah, I won't walk through every change. I thought I'd broad brush-
The big, serious ones.
Yeah. So this is our second public hearing on proposed changes to the lodging house regulations. The first public hearing was September 27. A number of people commented then. One comment included a desire for individual cooking facilities in lodging house rooms. That initiated a community discussion about this topic. And going forward with it required a change to the zoning bylaw, which was taken up by town meeting in May and passed. And the language that was passed permits individual cooking facilities in affordable-
Excuse me for one. Ms. Griffin, you're staying?
I'm staying.
Good. Okay. I'm sorry to interrupt.
So now, the zoning bylaw does permit individual cooking facilities and lodging house rooms where 100% of the units are deeded affordable housing. So that was an incremental change to permitting cooking in individual cooking facilities in lodging house rooms. The matter was very deeply studied by the code enforcement departments of the town, health, fire, and building. And also, of course, Fran Price offered her viewpoint of the affordable housing operators in sort of informing the whole process. And what you have tonight is the result of all of that work. It's been reviewed and approved by the Licensing Review Committee. A number of changes in this draft involve cleaning up some of the code enforcement language involving fire escapes and matters of that sort. The biggest change in terms of policy that this draft represents are the provisions regarding enhanced SRO units, as are called, which are the units with the individual cooking facilities. And in particular, there is a section in this draft that's under Section 40, which contains very detailed health and safety-type requirements that the code enforcement departments felt were needed to go forward with permitting individual cooking facilities. So that was just a very carefully crafted section by the code enforcement people. And we do have Pat Maloney here tonight from the Health Department.
Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Are there any here who wish to comment on the lodging house regulations as revised? Please come forward and just form a line over there, sort of in the direction of the podium.
Yes, again, I'm Art Klocken. In Brookline, I own 1019 Beacon Street. I was wondering, you added an extermination requirement. We already are burdened with so many costs, we haven't had any problems. Usually, we just get it as needed, but it seems like a burden to have someone come in twice a year. I believe that was in the regulations, to check the building out.
I think we've been having some issues with bedbugs, and it's not possible to have a regulation that only affects one operator when you're licensing. So it's very important to keep things healthy. Mr.-
Maybe we shouldn't let Mr. Maloney.
Well, Mr. Maloney is here, and he can speak to that.
The other question is, now, I've been very busy. We do not, as a policy, provide furniture. We have mostly long-term residents. We find we do get a better resident when they provide, especially beds, due to the bedbug. They're not interested in sleeping in someone else's bed. I wasn't sure whether there was an exception in that for long-term residents to provide their own furniture. There was an exception for housecleaning for long-term residents.
I think these are minimum standards. The expectation is that each resident will be allowed to have at least what's listed under room furnishings?
That's it?
Yep.
I think under 18A1, I believe it provides that every room shall provide a bed in good repair with a firm and even mattress provided by the owner, or the lodger may choose to provide his/her own bed and mattress. So I think that deals-
But there are other requirements in the rooms that-
Right. Well, there's a dresser with 16 cubic feet of space. I actually think the dresser requirement is in state law, isn't it?
I believe so.
I think that's part of, I may be mistaken, but I-
There's a state law, yeah.
Yeah, I thought that was part of the state requirement for lodging houses.
We have implemented what we are required to do under state regulation, but we did provide the flexibility for a resident to bring their own bedding.
Okay. Those are the only two things I really saw. The extermination was twice a year. We have not had any trouble with bedbugs in my particular building, because we have very few turnovers in the building.
Sure.
Thank you.
Maybe Mr. Maloney will speak to that.
Yes, just to point out, the new revised requirement is to address the concern that the Public Health Department has with the issues associated with bedbugs and a transient population. It tends to be an issue. We see this nationally. What I'd like to point out, though, is we do not have to exterminate. We're not saying you have to exterminate. We want an inspection. And if the inspection does not find an issue, then you don't have to treat. So I think that's significant. Having trained eyes go through the facility, make sure everything's in order, and we don't have associated issues, and we move on. So we've called around. That's just an inspection is much less expensive than implementing extermination. The key here is somebody's going through, they're looking to make sure there isn't an issue. And if there is an issue, then they may need to exterminate. But we're hoping this extra measure makes the facilities that much better, and we won't have an issue. Thank you.
Okay. Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I have a question for you, Mr. Maloney. Because I'm a little concerned about the effects of insecticides and things on people. And, you know, if you were getting that twice a year, I mean, I think there's actually statistics that people are more subject to cancers and things if they're repeatedly in contact with insecticides and things like that. So do you know, are there options if they get an inspection and somebody says, "Okay, you need some extermination"? Are there options for these property owners that involve less toxic material that is being sprayed?
Very good point. And this is a call we get routinely when people hear of extermination and pesticide application. The theme behind what we look for in Brookline, as well as the state, is integrated pest management. And in a nutshell, it's do everything possible environmentally before we apply pesticides. So we would look at that situation to see, is there something we could do environmentally? Take something out, correct rubbish issues, or whatever is a contributing factor shy of applying pesticides. Also, the industry is responding where they're using other methods. For example, with bedbugs, where they use heat. We hear of high heat as a very effective tool, doesn't involve toxics. As well as surveillance tools, you might have heard of the Beagle that is used to go around and sniff out if there is a bedbug issue. So there are innovations occurring to respond to that concern. And it's a valid concern that the public has. And we support, and we always look for minimizing the use of pesticides. Let's do everything environmentally to control this issue, and the pesticides are the last resort. So we want to make sure that's exhausted.
Thank you. Don't go away. Next person?
My name is Han Yehindee. I have ice cream truck. I have-
I'm sorry, we're not talking about food trucks. We're talking about lodging houses.
It's, I have a-
If you just take a seat, your turn will come. It's okay.
No problem.
Brian Austin. I own two roomy houses, a bed and breakfasts. And I just thought I'd come to this meeting and comment on this. Really, I was not part of the process. I think it's very well-intentioned, and I applaud the efforts. And I see no problems with the attempt, but I'm a little concerned about the increase in regulation. For example, one of the paragraphs that I read was, "When a renovation occurs, you must go up to national standards or statewide standards." What percentage renovation? What if one room gets cleaned up? Does that mean the whole property has to be done? It doesn't specify. There's really just not a, I feel like there could be a big impact here, and I haven't had time to study it, and I haven't had time to speak on it, except this is the first time I've been invited to a meeting to comment on these.
This is our second public hearing, both of which were well-publicized.
Well, I own two, and I didn't get anything in the mail. So maybe it did, and it got lost. But this is the first one I'm at, and I'm commenting-
You're welcome to be here. I'm just simply saying this is the second hearing that we've held.
Okay. Well, I just hope that you don't make a final decision this evening.
My quick answer to your question is that the level would probably be determined by the building department, by building code, depending on what you wished to do.
Let's see, that's probable. That doesn't mean, it should stay that in here, then?
No, because building code is not what we're talking about here.
Well, I read it differently, but I'm glad that you believe in the best interests of- You're creating a change that really impacts us, and I'd like more time. Another example is this inspections process. Heck, if somebody has a bedbug, they call the landlord. If the landlord doesn't fix it, he calls the Health Department. You don't need to require us to have inspections from Health, from, excuse me. It's just a problem that you're chasing that isn't there. There is, sure, there's a bedbug situation in many communities. But that's cyclical, too. You might go 15 years and never have the issue. It's just, that's another issue. So I'm hoping you'll give it a little more time.
On the other hand, your guests will be much assured to know that there's a regular inspection, and you could publicize that.
Well, it's unnecessary, and it's an added increase. So I could say to them, "Oh, your rate is really higher because the town requires me to have inspections for a problem that doesn't exist. Sorry." I don't mean to be cynical or sarcastic, but that's another way I could express my rates. I don't mean to be cynical or sarcastic, but that's another way I could express my rates. So pardon my phone there. Turn it off next time. I just hope you could give me another month.
Sorry.
Well.
We're not, we're not setting, excuse me, we're not making, just can I explain? We're not doing regulations by individual license holder.
Right.
Okay? You're welcome to read the regulations at your leisure and make comments to us separately from this hearing.
Is this a meeting where these could be changed?
You can.
Is on the agenda, yes.
You can make recommendations, whether or not they would be accepted at this time is not, I can't answer that.
Well, can I ask that we actually wait until our next meeting to vote this and give people who maybe feel they didn't get a chance to comment enough? That gives us a couple weeks because we're not meeting next week.
We won't meet again until July ninth.
I'd like to hear what other people have to say first.
Sure.
I agree with Jim and DeWitt, though, that this has been in process for a long time, our second hearing on it. If we delay it again, unless there's some really substantive things to think about here, if we delay it again, somebody will come out next week and say that they haven't had enough chance to.
Well, I'm just, I'm not saying we'd have to have another hearing on it. I'm just saying if people could submit emails if they, you know, have any specific thoughts. Anyway.
Thank you for your time.
May I just make a comment? I assume, Mr. Austin, you're referring to, with regard to your first comment, you were referring to paragraph fifteen.
About the review?
Right.
Yes.
And I guess I don't see, it is new language, but I think it's, it really adds very little or nothing. It basically says, new or renovated lodging houses must comply with all applicable state and local codes, rules, and regulations in effect at time of construction.
What's in effect at the Building Department anyway?
And I think all it says is, hey, you've got to comply with the applicable law. And I don't see how that really adds any additional burden.
I guess the important message here is, if you contemplate doing something, go to the Building Department, get your building permit, and they will tell you what your code issues are, if any. But that would be true with or without the lodging house regulations.
I suppose.
It applies to the Building Department regulations?
Yeah. Well, it's all applicable state and local codes. It could be the fire code, fire regulations. But in my mind, that particular section could almost be criticized as being surplisage. It's almost stating the obvious.
It is, but it's important. Okay, next speaker.
David Chapin. Fortunate, I never thought I would stand up here saying that I bought two properties forty years ago, one thirty-five years ago, one forty years ago. One of them is an apartment house at 1253 Beacon Street, and one is a lodging house at 1029 Beacon Street. Because I bought it so long ago, I can have some of my own rules and regulations. And one is, it's not written, but if you're over eighty years old, you'll never get a rent increase as long as I'm alive at 1029 Beacon Street and own the property. And I have five people there that have that. I have six people in the building who've been there more than twenty years, five, fifteen rooms, five that have been there more than five years, and four are more comparatively short-termers. So it's a long-term deal. I'm just a little concerned that the rules for 1029 Beacon Street, a licensed lodging house, are a little tougher than the rules for a twenty-nine-unit apartment building at 1253 Beacon Street. One is the annual inspection, and you know, I think really the annual inspection keeps me honest, so I like that. But when I saw the extermination, and I didn't realize other people, I said, I have an exterminator come in generally, but for somebody to tell me that I have an exterminator, supposed to have an exterminator come in, I think I'm a responsible guy. If it's not a problem, I'm not going to have an exterminator. But if I'm required to do it, that just bothers me a little bit. I realize that I'm also in violation of probably eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, which is, some of my furniture may be in that building, but everybody has their own furniture who lives at 1029 Beacon Street. If somebody needed a bureau, I would get them one, believe me.
You have to understand, I don't believe this expects that you must provide. It's simply that for living arrangements, these are the minimum requirements.
Says the room shall contain.
Yeah, and I think when I read it over again, it sounded like if the people wanted their own bed, and everybody does that I know want their own bed, that that's okay. So I guess my gripe, which is minimal, it's a great town to own a lodging house in, believe me, because I did have a vacancy six months ago, and I made the mistake of trying to make it as unattractive as possible, and I must have gotten over fifty phone calls for the room. But I would hope that you would eliminate the requirement on that extermination. I guess that's my only real.
You understand it's inspection.
It's inspection, not extermination. It's an inspection.
Inspection. We do have an annual inspection, as you know, from the lodging house that come out once a year to do a good job, the Health Department, the Police Department, the Fire Department.
That's right. This is to have a licensed exterminator inspect in order for when the annual inspection takes place, you will be able to say, we have had an exterminator inspect and we are clean.
And that's just another hundred and fifty, two-hundred-and-fifty bucks to have an exterminator come out and say, hey, your place looks good to me. That's against my gripe. Thanks.
Mr. Maloney, quick question. Is an inspection a hundred and fifty to two-hundred-and-fifty dollars?
It can run that amount. It could be a little less if you have an ongoing contract. We've talked to some operators, some pest control operators, and if they had a continued relationship with an operator, they would give them a break. So it varies. It's a sliding scale. If they know the facility they're going into is in good shape, they know it's going to be much quicker. So it's a sliding scale. I've heard it from seventy-five and up.
Can you, I assume you proposed that provision?
Yes.
And can you tell us why specifically?
Sure. It's the pattern that we're seeing in the public health world in our training is, in transient populations, in hotels, motels, lodging facilities, this type of issue has a higher incidence. So we're putting our hat on in prevention and looking to see, how can we put this in the right direction, make sure it doesn't become an issue? Because when it becomes an issue, it's difficult to resolve. It takes multiple treatments. So we're just trying to be in advance of it. And it's because of this type of transient population that raises the red flag for us. And this is why we made the recommendation.
So, but we've heard from a number of people that they tend to have long-term, of course, that doesn't apply to the bed and breakfast, obviously, but some of these other gentlemen mentioned that they had tended to have very long-term tenants. So they're not really dealing with a transient population. Is it too difficult to make any distinctions?
Well, there are facilities that do have, yes, long-term people that have been there longer than I've worked for the town, which is thirty years. So that is true. They also have a mix of some units that would be transient. So that's where we're concerned with. There is a section, I believe it's section thirty-seven, no, forty-seven, where if somebody feels there's a variation for a specific issue, and they want to apply and request a waiver of anything within our standards, as I understand that, they could request such and give reasons why, if there's an injustice or something here. And perhaps maybe that's what we want to consider, if they do have a hundred percent of their residents long-term, like similar to an apartment, maybe that's worthy of consideration. They would ask formally to the Board of Selectmen, and then the Health Department would, I guess, give a recommendation if somebody wanted to pursue it. So that has some merit. I'm surprised I haven't heard this feedback. I know last time at the last hearing, we did have one individual in opposition. And again, it's not treatment, it's an inspection, but obviously it's causing some issues here.
What about a variation on it that they would have to do the inspection once a year, I guess prior to your inspection? And then if there was a problem, you could put them on a twice-a-year schedule? Would that potentially work?
That would work. And if there was an issue, then we would say our recommendation for the annual renewal will be two times a year. So that's an option. That's an option. And I would like to hear if the operators have a thought on that. But that's an option.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I have 1085 Beacon Street.
Just tell us your name and bring the mic down.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, Barbara Anthony here, located at 1085 Beacon Street, Brooklyn. We have, the property's been in the family probably since about the turn of the last century. And it's had its histories, of course, and lodging, the word lodging license, when compliance came to be, was a result of the following. I'm just going to give you a little brief, little understanding here of what has happened and how it's grown. Many years ago, you could travel through the country and you would have something called a bed and board, whereby you would have a board and someone would cook you a meal, maybe for six or ten dollars. It was less expensive than staying in a hotel for twenty-one dollars during those years. These are the times when things change. A lot of people owned the buildings individually. As things changed, husbands are there no longer, the money changes through time. What then happened is that the ladies started to rent some of the rooms. So then along came the compliance. So you have a growth of that. Now we go into the next time where people are renting their lodging rooms, and this goes on for a number of years. Later on, we bring in what we call the bed and breakfasts. Some of them are ladies that are at home and they love to cook, and they rent a few rooms. Again, the times changes, money changes, this becomes popular. You have a range of bed and breakfasts that might go from something very reasonable to high-end, high-end boutique hotels, okay? Estates that have been turned into a B and B. You see, so they call different titles, all coming under a hotel rental. And also comes under the lodging license, you see, as we have here in many of the towns, you have to meet your compliance. So your compliance consists of your battery operated for your fire and your detection and everything that you need, okay? Now, Brookline, Fire Department, Building Department, Health Department, terrific job. And every year, they do a wonderful job. They've been very, very good with it all this time. Very, very happy with that. We happen to have a monthly person that comes in for exterminating and just walks right through the whole house, just in case. That's how we feel, just in case. Not everyone has to do it that way. They suggest every three months, but we do it every month, okay? Just in case, because you have, we have travelers. Some people have travelers, some people have lodgers that have been there for many, many years, others have affordable housing. So now you have a lodging license lumped under one, a big heading that applies to many, many different scenarios. I've noticed more recently, there was a request for the cooking, cooktop. And I do have something to say about that that may or may not be helpful or informative. Let's hope it is. Microwaves, yes. Some of the lodging rooms that they want to put cooking in is called a cooktop. A cooktop requires a twenty-two-volt electrical wiring. Not all of these houses have that. Not all of them have been converted or updated. There's an old knob and tube wiring that still exists in many of the houses, which is fine, it works. But when you start adding cooktops as opposed to microwaves, what then happens is that you either have to have that or you have to have venting. The venting can go either the front or the back of the building, or it can go through a chase through the roof. That would assist that. Now, after that, you have self-venting cooktops. A self-venting cooktops in a room is going to, it just turns the air right around. All it does is reverses, it brings it in and brings it out within the same room. You have a lodging situation with ten rooms, fifteen rooms, whatever it may be, there's quite a few odors that will be going through with everybody doing the cooktops. And also, they have, a lot of them have common baths. So where are the people going to wash their dishes and their pots and pans?
Excuse me, I'm not clear. Are you suggesting that you think the current regulations are permitting cooking in lodging house rooms?
This is what I'm understanding, yeah.
You're, I think you're under a misunderstanding.
Oh, good, I'm glad to.
The only place where cooking, all right, let me try it differently. In the regulations, Article thirty-nine explains.
We have to receive the paperwork.
All right, you should have a copy of the regs. Article thirty-nine makes it very clear that the only in-room cooking can be a microwave.
Good.
That's all. We have made a new type called an enhanced SRO, which can only be included if the lodging house has a permanently, it's deeded, permanently deeded to be affordable.
Okay.
If it's not affordable permanently, you can't have any cooking other than a microwave.
Okay.
At the moment, your lodging house is permitted to have a microwave.
Yes, it has only one.
As any other that's not permanently deeded affordable.
Good.
That's all, just a microwave.
The enhanced units would have to have upgraded electrical, they'd have to have upgraded electrical systems to address your concern.
Yeah, all the things you described.
And mechanical ventilation to the exterior, which is the other thing that you raised. So we've, those are points that are addressed in these regulations.
Oh, good, good. Some of the other things, I don't think that some of us had an opportunity to look over, but I guess that's okay. But there's one thing I would just like to bring up as a suggestion that may or may not be beneficial to the town at some point. Affordable housing is great, and it's very nice when they have little areas to meet and get together in, or a little play yard for the children. That's very, very nice. Not all of them happen to have that at this time, unfortunately. There is a movement on as time and things do change. And one of them that I'm finding is that a lot of people are inquiring and asking about apartments because of proximity to the city and the public transportation in the town of Brookline. We're finding that I have more and more inquiries for an apartment that you just couldn't believe, okay? A lot of people would like, and they're not interested in having automobiles. It's a different point in time. They want to have apartments close to the tee, in and out for their work. A lot of new people coming up. There's one place that I know of, they did do what they call floor-through apartments. They're wonderful. Works very, very well. The people were standing outside wanting to rent them right on the street.
We're not proposing those.
So I'm just suggesting that as a possibility, because this parking element comes up in the paperwork, from what I understand. And it's really not applicable at this point in time.
Right.
So I thank you very much.
Thank you, okay. Next speaker.
Hi, I'm Clifton Lay. I'm representing the Epsilon Theta fraternity at 259 St. Paul Street. And I have a few comments on the proposed regulations. Specifically, point twelve, which suggests that now parental approval is required for all minors. Formerly, it did include an exclusion for university students, which definitely affects us. I don't understand why the change was made in the sense that we are university-approved housing. It seems odd that we would require a separate approval just to be able to live there. So I'm not sure why that change was made.
Can we ask?
Let's ask Ms. Coria.
The change was made after consultation with the police, and I'm sorry, I don't have the reasoning foremost.
Right. What I recall, maybe Slickman-Golstein will remember.
What I recall is just difficulty in defining what a full-time university or college student was. And I think that the feeling was that either someone was emancipated, in which case they could be there on their own, or else, if they're not, they should have their parents' permission, whether they're a fraternity student or a college dormitory student or not. I can't imagine the in-between. Maybe you can help us.
Normal students aren't required to get parental permission to live in a dorm at the university. They have permission to go, but I mean, they just move into a dorm.
All right, but you're not a dorm.
No, but we are university-approved. No, but we are university-approved housing. We are inspected constantly by the university. We have free access to house students.
Do they accept applications for those residents in your house? Does the, in other words, if the university was reviewing, accepting, and approving applications, then it would be a dormitory in the same sense? But that's not the case.
Let me put a finer point on it, too. I mean, a person under 18 years of age is a minor and can't enter into a contract on their own behalf. So any contractual obligation that you enter into when you're under the age of 18 either requires that you be emancipated or that you have parental, your parent do it on your behalf, or guardian do it on your behalf. So I don't, I don't.
And what I was trying to say is that students who are residents in dormitories have gone through an application process which presumably has been signed off by their parents if they're under 18.
I'm not sure, I haven't encountered that before. This is the first time we've seen it.
Surely you don't have very many residents who are under 18.
We have had a few. Some people come to college very early these days.
And this is MIT, the chairman of?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, and I will say, we haven't had any complaints about you guys, but in another part of town, closer to another institution, we have had quite a few complaints about party noise, et cetera. And so, you know, I think that that is, may have been part of the concern behind this as well.
Okay.
Let me ask a question, just following up on Selectman Goldstein's question, or comment. What do you do if somebody is 17 years old? You cannot sign a contract with him, he can't, or she, well, it's a fraternity, he cannot sign a.
It's a coed fraternity.
Okay, so he or she cannot sign.
It's a ID after all.
A lease or an agreement. Don't you need parental consent anyway?
I'm honestly not sure, because I didn't deal with that part.
You know, you probably should check with your counsel on that one.
Another point was Number 17, describing the floor area per resident. I find the language here confusing. It seems to suggest, let me skip there. This is the last paragraph in Point 17. So every room occupied for sleeping purposes by more than one person has to have at least 60 feet. And then they say, but where other living spaces, provided it can reduce that, but it can't be less than 80 square feet for the first and 60 for each additional. That sounds like more than 60 per person total, unless I'm misunderstanding.
Sounds to me like the MIT guy is all over this.
No, but it says, it says 60 square feet for each lodger, or if it's a fraternity or dormitory, that can be 80 total for.
But it says it can be reduced.
No, it's 80 for the first plus 60 for the second.
I'm not sure if that's total area or sleeping area, or which, the language is.
Patty, is this something we got from the state?
This is something we haven't changed, I should know.
No, I think it's been this, pardon? Building Department? All right, it's probably building code. I mean, we didn't invent this.
No, but there is something weird about it, I think we need to, because why does it say, every room occupied for sleeping purposes by more than one person should contain at least 60 square feet for each lodger, except.
It could be reduced to 80 feet for the first lodger.
Yeah, which is, which is not, I mean.
It could be increased to 80.
None of us went to MIT, but I think we're following you on this one, that there's a problem with that language. Okay, so we have to.
I guess we're not voting this.
Yeah.
Can I just note, though, this is not changed from the existing bylaw. There's nothing, there's nothing.
I mean, this is probably, either we've got a transcription error, which is possible, or the original one was just wrong.
All right, the third, oh, sorry.
I was just going to say, I can ask the Building Department to take a look at that.
Yeah.
I know that the building code doesn't require 80 square feet for a single room. I think you can reduce the number of square feet if there's like living rooms, dining rooms, common areas.
Yeah, but that's not what this says.
No, but you're, but this is, this is not, you're right, but that's not exactly what this is addressing.
This seems, there seems to be some confusion in the section this gentleman pointed out to us, so.
What else?
Third point on Item 36, candles.
Ah, yes.
We completely understand that you shouldn't be burning candles since it's a fire hazard.
We believe birthday cakes are allowed.
Okay. We would also ask for a religious exemption for things like menorahs, because it would be fine if there were some language in there saying that.
I think, I think the understanding, and we'll ask Mr. Maloney again what he remembers, but maybe actually Selectman Goldstein, what I, what we were hearing from the Fire Department is no continuously burning candle. You can have something you blow out, which is in a contained area for a short space of time.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not what this says.
Yeah, but, but again, this is not something that's changed. This has been a part of this bylaw for a long time. And, you know, candles are a safety hazard in lodging houses, and, you know, if you're going to violate it.
I have to say that I have a friend who is a very, he keeps the, to a Hasidic lifestyle, burned his house down after the Friday night dinner.
Yeah. I think it would make sense to include language for something like, they have to be monitored at all times, or give a time limit or something, as with birthday candles. But I think it would be nice if there were some language noting an exception.
Well, we can check with the Fire Department on that one, I don't know if you're going to get that one.
Yeah, they're actually pretty insistent about this, because they have too many examples of the candles, or let's call it flames, open flames, with whatever, causing serious fires. This is, this is something about which they have very strong concerns.
Yes.
There also is Paragraph 47, which allows variation in the case of manifest injustice. And I would think that a narrowly defined and circumscribed religious exemption would be something to be considered, but.
But then every, every, every resident or every boarding house would have to apply for it.
Yeah.
Because it's a specific case.
Yeah, that's, you know, I don't know whether it really is an issue that affects every lodging house, or really does affect a fraternity that has a number of students who.
Mr. Maloney.
Yeah, I have to state, because we sat through the meetings, and I commend the Town Attorney for really corralling us and keeping us on track to put this document together. But according to the NFPA, candles are just about ready to pass smoking materials as the leading cause of fires. And our Fire Department has stressed that too many times, and we've had incidents in Brookline of serious issues related to candles. And so, our Fire Department, our Fire Prevention Deputy Chief is very firm on this. And I'm sure he can speak for himself if, you know.
Right.
But I got that message that the candles were most definitely a safety issue.
Okay, well, we know, we know that we've got a math error in one, and that we're not going to be voting these tonight anyway.
No.
So maybe this is one that comes back to us.
I would not recommend this coming back, I got to tell you. This is not something that's changed. The fire personnel are very adamant about this point. If somebody wants to apply for an exception, they should, but I do not think we should be toying with this provision.
The candle one.
Candle one, too, too, too long a history of candles causing fire hazards.
Well, no, it's candles or other items that require burning to be used.
Well, candles in particular, there's a long history of, it's very serious and deadly fires caused by candles. And I would not want to be responsible for that.
But the issue here is, it's an open flame in, that's not of short duration, like a birthday candle, which gets lit and then blown out.
Hopefully, if you want to get your wish.
Right.
That's right. Did you have anything else?
Yes, one more brief point on Item 38.
Yep.
So that was amended to include prohibiting toaster ovens?
Yep.
Does that include usage in the kitchen?
I don't think in a kitchen. I think it's in the lodging house room.
Okay.
Presumably, your kitchen meets the fire code inspection and therefore is sufficiently wired and vented, and therefore is permitted. It's the individual rooms where it's prohibited.
Okay.
It's, I will say, though, it's not clear from this that that is the case. I'm sure that that's the intent.
Well, that's certainly what.
I think it is clear.
Really?
Kind of flip back and forth, though. I'm sorry. Section 40.
No, but the, the A.
It's 38.
38A says can be used in a room, but B and C do not say in a room. And I, particularly C, where he's talking about toaster ovens and portable heaters.
So this is the electrical use policy section. So this just says, this is where the lodging house operators communicate to their residents.
Right.
And they have to communicate to their residents the following.
Right.
Including the restriction of toaster ovens.
Well, but, but the restrictions.
The restrictions for in the rooms.
This is the policy that has to be stated. 39 states the actual restrictions on what can be used in the rooms. And then 40 applies to kitchens, and 40C says you can't have.
Well, no, 40, 40 applies to the individual kitchens. That's the enhanced SRO provision. The cooking in rooms prohibits.
Everything except microwaves.
Everything except microwaves. I, I would read.
But we can, we can say in rooms.
I would read 38 as it's written now, to prohibit the use of a toaster oven in the common kitchen. I think it does that, because 39 refers to cooking in rooms. 38C basically says it prohibits the use of halogen lamps, portable heaters, and toaster ovens.
Okay, so this needs clarification.
I believe it does.
Yeah, right.
And I, and I do expect that you probably want to prohibit halogen lamps and portable heaters throughout, including common areas. So it would not just be limited to the rooms.
It's very simple, just add in-room toaster ovens to 38C.
Yeah, and I can check with the Fire Department about their views on what Selectman has said in terms of halogen lamps in the facility.
Can I ask about the phrase electrical strip receptacles? I know what your intent is, is to prevent overloading of circuits, or fire hazards due to overloading. But does that prevent the use of computer surge protectors which come in the form of strip receptacles?
This is the Fire Department's contract.
When I asked about this at the last public meeting, I asked about that point, actually, and they said it was specifically for the light gauge ones.
Right, it's, the, the, the light gauge, at the beginning, where it says light gauge is the applicable modifier, as I recall.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, in the mission of the Fire Department, they were very insistent on this section because they've had issues. So they reiterated, you can have extension cords, but they don't want them to be overloaded. The key here is, there's an electrical policy that you have to have, and they will review it with the operator and make sure that everybody's comfortable with it. So they would be looking at what you're proposing, what you're using, and they would see that they're comfortable, that things aren't overloaded by overtaxing the electrical system.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, my name is Christopher Polly. I came here not too long ago and spoke to you folks. My big objection at that time was tenants bringing their old mattresses, because that's where the bedbugs live. Told you folks that it'd be a real nice idea if you invited us to your meetings when you're discussing, promulgating rules and regulations, rather than have this line of concerned citizens here this evening. Lodging house license in Brookline is hard to get. Insurance is outrageous. I can't carry my own liability insurance because it's astronomical. I can't charge my tenants enough in order to pay for liability insurance. But that's neither here nor there. This illogical suggestion that we have people come in and look around, see if we have bugs, sheer insanity. I've operated our lodging house for over 60 years.
Come on, you've never, you've never heard of a lodging house having bugs before. I mean, we're not saying that you do.
No, no, I'm saying, I'm saying it should be within reason.
But not everybody operates.
The Health Department, the Health Department promulgates rules relative to industry standard. Attention, this is Brookline. A lot of people want to live in Brookline. We have good quality people who live in here. I don't think.
I agree more.
Our guests are not transients. They wouldn't stay.
You just heard, you just heard one of the other operators say that she does have transients. We have to write rules that apply.
That's because she runs a bed and, Ms. Anthony runs a bed and breakfast.
We have to write rules that apply for everybody, okay? Not just for you.
Once upon a time, the Building Department used to come out and used to jump up and down on my fire escape and say, well, that's strong enough. Now every five years, I have to have an engineer come in and certify structural integrity.
Does he jump it up, up and down?
He isn't jumping up and down. He walks up there, checks, make sure it's sound.
I, for one, am glad we've come up with a better method. Thank you.
Then, lodging houses are fully sprinkled. Probably the most safe, 125-year-old wood frame house in Brookline is my house. The Fire Department decided that the common area sprinklers weren't good enough, they had to extend into all the rooms. Okay, we did that. But we didn't know about it until the law went into effect. And they, they were going to gig us for it. Why haven't you done it? We didn't know about it. Then, the coup de grâce was that once you broke the fire, the sprinklers, you had to put in a backlog preventer, an additional $800. Now, the creative, Department of Public Works has found a new, new way to tax water hookup. For 60 years, I've never paid to have my sprinklers hooked up. Now I pay $320 a year additional for water. Somewhere along the line, the lodging house has to stop being the Brookline pinata. That's why we should come to these meetings, that's why we should be questioned as to, what can we do to help your business? Should the Fire Department, when they go to a three, when was the last time a lodging house was in, had a fire? Should the Fire Department, when they go to an illegal lodging house, get a list of tenants who run the lease? That's the kind of progressive act of.
Should we wait for there to be a fire before we make, before we update the rules? Is that what you're suggesting?
That's why you're a lawyer, you don't do that. I thank you for your time, thank you.
Next person.
Thank you. I'm David Glaugh, I have lodging houses at 1087 and 1750 Beacon Street. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I have, if I could, just ask a question or two, and then make a comment, a few comments. The definitions of rooming unit, that's the units that exist now, is that right, as opposed to this new concept of an enhanced?
Existing, currently existing, not, not the new one.
Right, so the big distinction here, I think one of the big distinctions is to try to make provisions for an enhanced single room, in distinction to the rooms. I just want to make sure I understand that right. I do it right, thank you. Another question I have is, you know, I heard the earlier explanation about the rehab, I guess I still have a bit of a concern about that. And also a question about the parking. There's a clause in here under Section 3. It talks about, on the very bottom of the page, actually, it says applicable parking requirements, including but not limiting to applicable parking requirements. And I guess that gets a little, hopefully you can tell me what that means a little bit, but it gets a little bit to my concern about what's grandfathered and not, because many of these buildings are old. You know, ours are 100-year-old buildings. And so I have a concern about, you know, parking and the rehab, and some things that inadvertently might get us in a spot that we don't want to be in. Could I, could I ask that?
Well, first of all, the rehab would only apply if. Well, first of all, the rehab would only apply if you make a change. And if you make a change, you go to the building department and depending on what you would like to do, you will be given the building code requirements. Building code requirements change at the state level, and we have to be in compliance, as do you. So if you were to want to make some changes, the place to find out about what, if any applicable code would be to your changes, you go to the building department and they will help you understand that.
I just want to make sure this is not more restrictive than the building department. So I guess that would.
It's just the building department. It's the same, you would, anybody who.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. It's not special for lodging houses.
I think all this, all this says, and what you're referring to, is that you have to comply with the town zoning bylaw, state and local health codes, the state building code, and the state fire code. And I would say that if you're grandfathered under the zoning bylaw, this doesn't un-grandfather you.
Okay.
It just makes the existing codes, it refers to and incorporates the existing codes. It doesn't change those codes.
What about the parking?
That's a zoning issue. You know, whatever, whatever you are required to have or not have under zoning is not changed.
But let's, let's say we don't have as much parking as is required now, but we've existed for, you know, many, many years. Is that putting that into question?
They're probably grandfathered now.
I'm guessing you're grandfathered.
Yeah. And if you're grandfathered, you're compliant. But if you, if you increase the number of rooms, you might have to come into compliance for that increase.
I mean, I think if this gentleman has a question about a specific property, you can just call the building department and they can sort of walk you through what requirements.
Am I, am I understanding correctly that because of certain issues that have come up, that this is actually going to be, go to another meeting? Or is that uncertain at this point?
Selectmen will not take a vote tonight, but we didn't plan another public meeting. We're listening to comments now, between now and the next time we meet, which is scheduled for July ninth. You will have an opportunity, if you like, to give us comments in writing. You can send us an email, or you can drop something off at the selectmen's office. We'll try to look at all of the information before we finally take a vote, but we don't intend to have another public hearing.
We could give input to some of the town officials that are writing it?
You can certainly give information to us through the selectmen's office, yes.
Because I think, you know, I think there's been six or seven lodging house owners, I'm sorry, owners of about six or seven units that have some concerns about exactly what this all means. And, you know, one of the comments I would have is just in the spirit of, you know, hoping that everybody's on board, is that we could understand it a little bit better. Maybe, I presume so much of this is fine, but it's a little bit uncertain to us what the implications are. So I would appreciate having the ability to have the input of various people. And, you know, I think we have the advantage of MIT scholars pointing out some things here. So that was awfully nice. And so I'm just hoping that we can give a little input if we see some things that are missed. And I personally apologize, Pat Maloney had once mentioned this to me, and he's going to scold me. I should have been more attentive, and I apologize for that. But I'm hoping in the spirit of, you know, the various people that have spoken tonight, that we could all come together on this and make it so that owners and citizens are all happy. And I thank you for listening to me.
Looks like you are wrapping up. Ms. Griffin.
Jan Griffin from the Pine Street Inn. We own two lodging houses in Brookline.
Can you pull that, pull the microphone?
Oh, sorry. The two lodging houses that we own are seventeen fifty-four Beacon Street and ten forty-three, ten forty-five Beacon. And we've been in Brookline since nineteen eighty-four. So I'm back at the microphone, first of all, to answer any questions.
Selectmen Benka.
Yes.
Otherwise, she could have gone home.
No, I actually have a question about, and this is the practical application of this, is paragraph forty D, the minimum dimensional requirements for an enhanced SRO. And you will be the, I suspect, the first enhanced SRO, given the other votes that we had tonight. It's a minimum of a hundred and seventy-five square feet and a minimum of a hundred and twenty square feet of living space in each SRO unit. And is that, the difference is closet space, basically? Is that what we're talking about? I'm just wondering what the regular.
Closet bathroom?
Well, is bathroom considered living space?
No.
Under the building and health codes, there's, there's living space. You have hallways, so.
That's not.
They would be, right. So living space, we wouldn't be calculating that hallway. We would be looking at the sleeping area, if there's an area that has a dining zone or just various areas, but you exclude a hall area, closet space, as you mentioned, that you wouldn't put as part of that calculation.
Would, would bathroom space count toward living space?
I believe so. I believe so.
Now, that takes me to the question. I know you mentioned that one of the existing units was a hundred and eighteen square feet. You also mentioned that you were expanding them. Do these minimums of a hundred and twenty square feet of living space, i.e. excluding hall and closet space within the units, and a minimum of a hundred and seventy-five square feet, including hall and closet space inside the unit, do those present any problems for you, or will you meet those?
Not as a, as a minimum. They don't present any problems.
Okay, all right.
And maybe it would be okay if you don't mind, since we used some materials that Pine Street Inn provided us to think about these dimensions, perhaps you would just describe your own experience with enhanced SROs?
Our experience with enhanced SROs, they hover around between two fifty and three hundred square feet.
Okay. And I, and I know that the, I think the minimum, Boston has some minimums also, which are, might be a hundred and seventy-five square feet.
I think we actually may have used Boston as our model here.
Okay, all right.
Boston has this four-tiered system.
Yeah, there's more complicated.
Exactly. But I really did just want to make sure that, as applied, we weren't creating a problem here.
No, no. And I could just add my final two cents. I just want to really say that we appreciate all the time and effort around the coordination of so many different people and committees, you know, the departments, health, fire, building, legal, the licensing committee, the zoning committee, the warrant article that went to town meeting. I mean, an enormous amount of effort, as you well know, has gone in to the creation of what will be a new housing type, enhanced SROs in Brookline. And we so appreciate that. And the genesis for that type of unit came directly from our tenants over time. And it's a quality of life issue, as I've said in different forums. So we thank you for that.
Well, we very much look forward to seeing the first ones on Beale Street.
Okay. Just one final comment before we close.
Yep.
Patty, think about on thirty-eight C, taking out the and toaster ovens and just prohibiting, I assume that you want to prohibit halogen lamps and portable heaters everywhere.
I will double-check with the fire department. That sounds probable.
Yeah, just prohibit the use of halogen lamps and portable heaters. Take out the reference to toaster ovens there and insert toaster ovens in paragraph thirty-nine after toasters, which would then say that the use of electric hot plates, et cetera, toasters, toaster ovens is prohibited in any room other than a kitchen in a common area that is approved by the building commissioner.
Well, toaster ovens should be mentioned in thirty-eight because thirty-eight deals with the policy and what has to be in the policy that the operators communicate to their residents. But we can.
The fire prevention people have a particular fear of toaster ovens.
They want to make sure that the residents know that they cannot have toaster ovens.
Okay, so then, then you would go with and in-room toaster ovens.
Yeah, we can tweak that language. Make it look clear.
Yeah, and, but then you can go back and also include toaster ovens in thirty-nine.
Correct, okay.
If they're particularly, if there's a particular concern about them.
Okay.
And can I ask that you consult with Mr. Maloney about a possible alternate paragraph in twenty-one for the extermination that would be once a year with more if necessary or something? I don't know.
Inspection, once a year.
Inspection.
Please, let's not say extermination, because that's not what's meant.
Well, I mean, the paragraph is labeled extermination.
Right. But the inspection once a year.
Can lead to an extermination, but it's, the requirement is for inspection.
I think we will now move on to the next item, which is mobile food vendor regulations. Hello?
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Hani Hindi. I have ice cream truck. I work in the Brookline around eight years ago.
I don't know about that. I'm not going to do that tonight.
And I have a permit, couple of week ago, I get couple of permit, permit to work in the Brookline.
Yes, you have, you do have a permit to work in Brookline.
Yeah, I have it.
Yes.
I be, and he talked to me, go to the park department to approve it.
To the park department?
To approve it, yes. When I going over there, and the last week, he said to me, you can't go into any park. If you want to sell ice cream in the park, you have to stop outside in the street.
Unfortunately, that is a regulation from the Parks and Recreation Commission who have authority over the town's public parks. And we do not have anything in our food vendor mobile regulations with regard to other than where people are permanently located along a street. It's the park, the Park and Recreation Commission who can tell you whether or not you can enter into the grounds of the park. They have the authority over parks. I think you'll have to ask them. I'm sorry, I'm, we're not able to, I mean, we can find out what they are proposing or if they have created a new regulation, but that is not within the food vendor regulations we're discussing tonight.
I don't have food, I have ice cream baggage.
Sure, I do understand that. You're a licensed food vendor, though.
So you, as, as I recall, you had your truck at Lars Anderson?
Sometime, yeah.
In the parking lot?
Yeah.
And, and now the parks are saying, is it the Parks Department?
It would be the Parks and Recreation Commission having a policy with regard to where ice cream trucks can be, I think.
Are saying that it should be out on the street.
That's what it sounds like, but I don't know about it.
Who actually told you that?
I'm going over there to the, some lady over there, she told me that you have to stop in the street.
Some lady where? Where?
In the park department.
In Town Hall?
Andy, do you know anything about this?
Here, the park department, the fourth floor.
Yeah.
If I may.
Sure.
As part of the mobile food requirement, it notes, and I don't have my rig in front of me.
Yeah, I do.
It notes that to be on town property and park property, you need permission from that particular commissioner or board. So when this gentleman came and applied for his license, and he said he wanted to be in the parks, he said you need to get permission from the parks division. It's my understanding, the parks commission voted to not, they don't want ice cream trucks in the park facilities. It could be outside, but they didn't want in the facilities. So I think what would be appropriate is that he go before the park commission and, because I'm not sure if he was notified that they were going to do a vote of that, but I think that would be appropriate. But he's, we're being consistent. He is, he's been approved to go around the town, but if he wants to go in a particular facility, that's regulated by another commission or board, he needs to get permission from them.
So I think you need to contact Erin Gallantine, who is the director of parks, and ask, find out from her assistant, when is the next Parks and Recreation Commission, and see if you can speak to them, see if you can get on their agenda to speak to them about your issue. Do you understand me?
No, I don't.
I think you need to, you need to go and speak to the Parks and Recreation Commission. And in order to do that, you need to find out when their next meeting is and ask if you would be able to be on the agenda, if you would be allowed to speak to them.
Andy, can you help him? Okay. If you turn around, you see the gentleman two seats back, he's waving his hand, he can talk to you and help you understand what you must do and help you do it. Okay?
But they, they may not agree, but you can go ask them.
You may get, you may not get permission. What we can tell you is where to go to ask. Okay?
I think, I think as, as we sit here today, we don't know what the issues are. You know, on the one hand, it would certainly seem to be safer for children to have the truck off of the street.
Absolutely.
If that's possible. But there may be some concerns that the parks commission or the parks department had. But I think if, if you have somebody to, as a contact person to talk to, and Andy, thank you very much for sort of shepherding this process. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other, you want to come back and talk to us about food trucks?
Well, I wanted to explain the basic principle of the changes.
Sure, yeah.
That would be helpful. It's simply to implement.
We're now at the open, the public hearing on food trucks.
The changes that you see in your packets to the regulations are simply implementing new state regulations requiring fingerprinting-type background checks of ice cream truck drivers.
Right.
So it's simply doing that.
Yeah. Okay. It's a public hearing with regard to mobile food vendor regulations. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on mobile food vendor regulations? Apparently not. In that case, I think we should hold these and vote all of them at the same time unless there is some interest on the part of the Board of Selectmen to vote the mobile food.
Now, why hold the, why hold the mobile food?
Okay, fine, let's vote them.
Let's get those.
Let's do it. All right, let's do it. Then I move that we approve the mobile food vendor regulations as revised and dated twenty thirteen, March eleventh draft. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley?
Aye.
Selectmen Benka?
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectmen Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We will hold the lodging house regulations for our meeting on July ninth and remind everybody that there will be no selectmen's meeting next Tuesday. And I believe that concludes the business of the Brookline Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, June twenty, sorry, Wednesday, June twenty-sixth.